Hi, how are you, Rini?
Hi, how are you?
Hello.
Hi.
Sorry, my dog's in the cone from surgery.
Yeah.
Sideburn thing.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Hi, you okay? Wave to the East Hampton media people. This is what gets us started.
(laughing).
Okay, great. Well, I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for December 7th, 2021 at 6 o'clock. And if we could start off, please, by standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, thank you. Well, as we get started, I'm gonna re-institute something that Rini had done in terms of our intro to our meetings way back when, and we kind of fell off the practice of doing it. But if anybody here amongst the Select Board in particular, or anybody in the audience, has any pearls of wisdom or words of gratitude that they would like to share, we'd be glad to hear that for a moment or two, and Rini, sure, ladies.
I'd just like to thank veterans out there for their sacrifice. We remember them today and every day. Thank you.
I'll just add to that by just saying I just would like to thank everybody who was involved in decorating the town square, especially the lovely tree as you drive in. It's just beautiful to drive down the center of town and see all the lights right around Town Hall. So thanks to the fire department and everybody else that was involved in putting that together. All right? Great. If nothing else, we don't have any public hearings or presentations tonight. We do have open time for the public if anybody would like to share anything ahead of time. No big volunteers tonight? All right, great. We will move on. This is gonna be good. I like this. (laughing). Tonight, first of all, this is a first time for you all. This is gonna be the night of the schools, I think. We've instituted a practice of trying to do not really quarterly reports, but probably every six months, more or less. So probably twice a year, you might get called up to give us an overview of what's going on at the various, not only the schools, but the various departments and commissions that are involved here. So we'd like to hear directly from the horse's mouth, rather than necessarily just from our liaisons, even though our liaisons do a great job attending many of the meetings. We don't have a liaison to all the committees in town. So this gives us a chance to hear from your perspectives, you know, what some of the challenges are that you're facing, some budgeting or staffing issues in particular, any problems that we should be aware about as a Select Board. So this is the evening to share that. We usually allocate probably 10 to 15 minutes per presentee, so you don't necessarily need to read everything that you've given us. You really just would thank all the members involved with Norris and Hampshire and our school superintendent and team to have given us some information in writing ahead of time. It's really helpful for us to have read some of that. So why don't we start out with Norris School and our principals? Please step up and introduce yourself and...
Hello, I'm Eliza Pluta, the principal at Norris School, and thank you so much for inviting me tonight to update you on some of the great things that are happening at Norris and some things that we may need some help with. Our current priorities and activities, for many years, we've tried to institute a multi-tiered system of support for all students so that they get the help they need in reading and math prior to being identified for special ed services. This year is the first time that we are able to support all students in K-3 who need reading support. I have reassigned my two reading interventionists to focus only on those K-3 students. We have an interim assessment called FastBridge, so we're using that three times a year to identify those students who need Tier 2 interventions. And then our classroom teachers in K-3 are also differentiating instruction for those students. We've worked really hard to analyze this data and figure out what students need. I don't think that it was, it wasn't anything new that was in the budget because I had, you know, $600,000 in budget cuts last year, but it was more about reorganizing and only focusing on K-3 instead of going spread thin K-6. We are focusing deep on K-3, so happy about that and hoping to continue it in the future. This year, we also purchased a new reading curriculum for K-5, and the name of it is Open Court, and we are moving from the Balanced Literacy Program to a more scientifically-based, the science of reading program. So students are learning a lot in the younger grades on phonemic awareness, phonics, and this is a shift that the country is basically going in right now, going from a balanced literacy approach to this science of reading approach. We had studied some different social-emotional curriculums over a year, and we came up with Second Step for our social-emotional curriculum. It was a committee of about six people who had looked at several different programs that we wanted to institute, and then COVID happened, so our implementation of it last year was a little slow, but we are in full gear this year. Students are learning about empathy, perspective-taking, processing emotions, understanding and resolving conflicts, and building positive relationships, and I feel like we've never needed it more than now. We are finding, as many people are, that students, because of the pandemic and not being in school full-time the whole time, some students were learning at home as well, other students were, you know, half at school and half at home. We have lost some of our social-emotional skills that we had started to build in kindergarten, so we're trying to support all students by using this program. Some of the things that we're doing to prevent bullying at school is my new assistant principal, Mrs. Lukasiewicz, who could not be here tonight. She has visited all classes in grades four through six to show bullying videos and have discussions with students about bullying, how to respond to bullying, what it feels like to be bullied, what to do if you see bullying happen, and what not to do, and how to report it to a teacher. She's doing a great job. We used to only focus on 5th grade for some reason, and this year we expanded it to 4th, 5th, and 6th grade. Some of the health and safety things that we're continuing to practice, Perdosi mandate, the Department of Ed, the school committee policy, students are and staff are wearing masks inside the building except while eating and drinking or during a mask break. So we continue to wear masks, as you know. I'm probably not telling you anything new. Our pool testing program began on Tuesday, November 30th last week. We had a couple positive ca, well, we had a few positive cases last week, and a couple did show up in the pool testing. So students were able to get retested and go back to class, or if we found a positive, a student that was positive, they had to go home and quarantine and get a PCR test. And then our Test and Stay program also began, which helps us keep kids in school when they're identified as close contacts, if there's a positive case in school. So if a student is named positive in school, those close contacts can be immediately tested, and if they're negative, they can stay in school, which has been really good. Our school nurses have just gone above and beyond our expectations during this pandemic, and I just wanted to kind of give them a shout out. They've been doing contact tracing and family support because many families still, you know, need help and have questions when that phone call comes in that, you know, your child has tested positive. So they continue to work after school on weekends. They volunteered for our vaccine clinic that we had a few weeks ago. And, you know, every weekend, it seems, we get an email from a parent who says, oh, my child just tested positive, what do I do? So they've been in contact with Sharon Hart, and she does a great job, too. But, you know, families are very comfortable with our school nurses to help guide them along the way. This year, we have a few new staff members due to retirements or resignations for teachers, art, music, ELL, which is the English Language Learner Teacher for students who haven't come to this country not speaking English, and special education. We have a new assistant principal, and I just hired a part-time math interventionist who will begin January 3rd. So this was something I had asked for in the budget for a full-time math interventionist to support those kids in K-3, just like I am with reading. But unfortunately, we had to cut it to a part-time position, I could only fund a halftime position, and she begins, like I said, January 3rd. Some of the good things that are happening in the future months are, we have our new music teacher, Mrs. Lavand, will be posing, posting a winter concert, which will be online, and this will be mid-January. So she's starting to videotape students doing the great things that they do in music, and she's gonna put it together as a concert for parents, and she'll post that online. The PTO is planning a springtime bizarre. Not sure if that will be outside or inside, but we're hopeful that it will happen. In conjunction with the Southampton Police Department, we're planning a reunification drill in sometime in May. The National Assessment of Educational Progress is going to be conducting testing for, it's national testing, and it will happen at Norris for any students who are nine years old. So could be a few third graders, but mostly 4th graders. It's, like I said, national, and they get tested in reading and math, and then we receive results on how we compare nationally to other students like ours. Girls on the Run, which had a fall team from Norris, they have teams throughout Pioneer Valley, which helps girls in grades 3 through 5 with some social-emotional things, kind of building up self-esteem in girls, which is really great to do. They had their final 5K a few weeks ago at the Reservation Holyoke, I can't think of the name of it, Ashley Reservoir, I live right there. They will have another team this spring. And then some of our budget planning, we haven't started to develop the budget for next year. I know that they take care of the regional schools usually first, but some things that we're thinking about. In order to continue to support this multi-tiered system of support for all students, we will need to continue to fund the two reading specialists that we currently have for K-3. We will need an additional funding for reading support in grades 4 through 6. We have this part-time math interventionist for K-3, and the position will need to be funded full-time to begin to support all students in math. Looking at funding a program for our intensive special needs students, we currently have 16 students identified as autistic and behavioral, with behavioral challenges, and although not all students need the same level of support, we do not have dedicated staff members or funding to support the needs of all students. So a few years ago, we were successful in moving some money around to open up the language-based learning classroom for students that had reading difficulties. And since that time, we have not sent one student out that has a reading disability to go to a school like White Oak, and it has saved us lots of money. We want to do the same thing with our students who have autism or on the spectrum or have trauma or behavioral issues, because we're finding that the needs are so different, and yet they run deep. So we need specifically designed instruction and support for those students to prevent them from going out. Currently, we have three students over the last few years that have gone out for social-emotional type of disabilities that cost a lot of money. So say it's $60,000 to $70,000 per kiddo, we might need, you know, three staff members that will prevent students from going out to other programs, and we can keep them in-house. And we know we can do it, we just need the funding to do it. An additional part-time school adjustment counselor to support students' social, emotional, and health needs, and we will also be asking, of course, to fund the library so that I can open up the library again at Norris. I know our own town library is having difficulties, and it's a shame that the students are not able to visit our school library. You know, I did think about volunteers. I talked to a couple of the volunteers that worked previously in the library, but with 470 students attending, you can imagine if students were to take out books, the amount of time it takes to shelve books, keep the books intact, keep the system consistent. It's just, it's not something that I don't think a volunteer could actually run the library. We also want to educate children in the library, not just have them take books out and bring books back. Okay?
Very good.
I was able to submit that ahead of time, so I don't know if you have any questions.
Very helpful, thank you.
No, it's very, very helpful, yeah. Does anybody have some questions? I know I've got a couple, but go ahead if you've got, yeah. Are you ready?
Yeah, that was really helpful, and it's good. Can we, do you have data on the language-based learning program and the effectiveness? I think that'll really help in terms of funding, like how many students dissipated, and therefore how much was saved based on the out-of-district placements and such?
Okay. Now, are you speaking of the program I already have that has prevented students?
The one that was put in place a couple of years ago?
A few years ago, right? Because that was, that was a big argument, right? To help us try to save some money about not being, not needing to send kids out?
I just think that will go a long way in terms of the special services for social, emotional, behavioral, and also the math and continued funding, just to be able to prove that they were effective and they did what they were intended to do.
Okay.
And the other thing is, I have a number of district questions, but I just wanted to say, is the parking situation going better, or what's happening with that?
I have not received one complaint this year at all about the line.
Okay, good.
We have more kids on the bus, that's what helped. More families are sending their students on the bus, which has decreased the amount of parent pickups and parent drop-offs.
Yeah.
And sometimes, when I'm running a little late, I might come down Pomeroy Meadow Road at about 8:27, and there's probably two cars in line, whereas last year, I think they started lining up about 8:15 in the morning, and the buses were trying to go by the cars. So to me, it's much better, but it's, I haven't heard that it wasn't, so.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
If anyone has problems, they should definitely contact me.
Probably a good sign.
I was just gonna ask, is there any collaborative relationship among the five elementary schools where if they have specializations, like ours would be language-based learning and hopefully autistic kids sometime in the future, if they have programs that some of our kids could benefit from, that maybe we could accept their children for our language base and send to their, but not at this $60,000 or $70,000 rate?
Right. We have had discussions about that. I think that what we would do is start small and only start with Norris, but the thought would be that in the future, we would be able to accept students tuition-based from other schools in the district. Right now, I think the incidence of those students in those schools is very low, and they're able to support those students at their schools. I don't know if anybody has any other, but that's what we've discussed.
Okay. Got a couple. Just, you mentioned early on the Second Step, social-emotional curriculum at every grade level. Are you able to see any difference? And I guess I'm wondering, are the kinds of things that you're seeing through that curriculum, or the implementation of it, are there, is there a difference from like, you know, what you're seeing at the first grade level versus the sixth grade level in terms of stresses and issues that kids are having to deal with?
I think the stresses in the younger grades are students being able to regulate themselves. So last year, when we were, well, you know, it's, we all like to say that only half the kids were there last year, but the younger kids, K-2, were full in way before everybody else was. But the, so many kids, I think, were remote learning or homeschooled last year that the classroom sizes were much smaller. So students in the younger grades, we were not seeing the types of behaviors that we're seeing this year with them being able to manage their frustrations, emotions, or their ability to wait their turn, or to express themselves about how they're feeling. So this program really does work on, you know, how do I express myself when I'm feeling sad, or when I have anger, or how do I read your face when you look mad, and what's my response? So that's been really good. The older kids, you know, it's, we haven't seen a huge, you know, number of students in the older grades who are like the younger students. And what I didn't report on, because it's so brand-new that I don't really, didn't really want to talk about it yet, was the other thing Mrs. Lukasiewicz is doing is going into 6th grade and having discussions with the class about growth mindset, being able to identify, you know, where do you want to go, and how are you gonna get there, and thinking positively about your next steps and things like that. And we don't have any data to say this stuff is working yet, but with Second Step, we do, we're trying to take a whole-school approach where normally, part of the program is having school-wide assemblies where the topic or the theme of the month might be empathy, and we would role-play or have teachers role-play to the kids. And then when the kids are in class, the teachers are also going over these things. We're not able to have school-wide assemblies right now because it's not safe, but Mrs. Lukasiewicz and I, during our morning messages, every morning when we salute the flag, we give a morning message about the Second Step program, whatever the topic of the week is. And the teachers have given us feedback that it's very helpful that we are aligned with them and what they're talking about in the classroom. We're saying the same thing over the intercom on how to resolve a conflict with your friend today, or make sure you look at your friend's face before you respond to see how they might be feeling, you know, things like that.
Very interesting, yeah. And I guess, just totally unrelated in a way, but you mentioned the mobile vaccination clinic. How well-attended was that?
Oh, we, well, we discovered after it started that they actually didn't have enough vaccinations for the amount of people that showed up, so it was a glitch. And we're hoping for a smooth Thursday this week when we have the second dose coming for those students that had their first dose last time. I don't have a number for you how well-attended it was.
Was that from the North Hampton Health Department?
I'd have to look.
It was the, it was the...
I don't think so.
It was the Vax, the Vax bus?
It's the Vax bus.
I'd seen it advertised somewhere.
And I don't know the name of the people that have done it.
But either, yeah.
It's not the same of, it's not the same that was at Williamsburg. They're two different, we couldn't get the same people to come to us.
Okay, okay.
Chris, you done? I just thought of another question.
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to put a shout-out to the nurses as an RN myself. I just want to say that the nurses in both, all schools have done a phenomenal job, and I just wanted to put a shout-out to them.
Thank you.
I know that the, I've been volunteering, giving vaccines at the North Hampton Health Department, and they are going up to Hampshire Regional, I believe, this week, I think. So I think that requires pre-registration, so I don't know if that was an issue on the mobile thing, but anyway, are there still students that are remote?
No.
Everyone's in person?
Remote is not an option this year.
It's not even an option at all?
We have a couple homeschool students, but not remote, yeah.
Did anybody decide to homeschool because, you know?
Yes.
Intentionally because of the pandemic?
Yes, yes. Until there was a vaccine, until their child, you know, their child could get the vaccine, yep. But yes, the nurses have, you know, and my nurses are really great, and they don't complain, and so sometimes it's the ones that are the quietest that don't get the recognition because they're all set, and I don't have to worry about them. But I've tried to remind myself to stop and thank them, because when those emails and text messages start on the weekend, their family stops, you know? Everything stops in their life because they feel they have an obligation and a duty to help the students and families of Norris, and I appreciate them so much.
Yeah, they're the, primarily the medical person in the building, and I know when I used to sub there, I mean, there were adults that came in and kids, and it's scary sometimes. There's a lot of complexities.
Are the nurses back to full-time yet, or not?
No, point eight, point nine.
That's weird. They're each helping.
They each work four and a half days.
Even with the additional funds that we appropriated?
I don't know if those monies were appropriated yet.
I have not gotten word yet. I haven't reached out, but I have not heard the act that we have definitely made.
Was that CARES Act?
Yep.
Yep, it should have been. So is there...
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll work on that. That should be, as far as I know, we've approved it at our level here, so we will close the loop on that. Thank you, Rini, very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. All right, all right. Could we then move on to, let's see, Hampshire Regional.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me tonight.
Hi. Yeah, just introduce yourself.
Yep, I'm Lauren Hoots. I'm the interim principal at Hampshire Regional. So I will kind of go the same way as Eliza did and walk you through, and then any questions that you guys have. So I'm pleased to report that our school council has met monthly so far this fall, and we developed our school improvement plan for this year. And last night, our school committee approved that plan. And so it has four overarching goals around, the first one is around educating the whole child, the second one is about safety, physical safety, COVID, school culture, mental health types of safety, the third one around curriculum and instruction, and then the fourth one, equity and inclusion. We are really focusing right now at school around student mental health and school culture, which really go hand in hand. We're finding our kids are struggling more than ever right now with mental health, and just in very, very intense ways that we've never experienced before. So just yesterday, we had a guest speaker come in, and so we did two presentations, one for the middle school, one for the high school. Very similar, but slightly different for the different ages, and that was very well-received. Today, students took a quick survey just to give us their feedback, and also to let us know if they, based on that presentation, if they feel like they need extra mental health support, or if they have friends who they're worried about. So we're pretty happy that we were able to do that and get some data from that. School culture, so we are kicking off a student council event around rebuilding the Raiders and really just focusing on school spirit and getting our school culture and climate back up to what it used to be before school shut down and before things got really complicated. And so I'm excited about that. That's happening very soon. Our winter athletics just recently started, and our boys and girls basketball teams kick off this Friday at UMass, so that's, it's exciting to be back to some type of normalcy around athletics with masks on indoors. Health and safety, so right now, our combined school population, 77% of our combined school population is vaccinated, so that includes all part-time, full-time staff members, coaches, and all students. Like Eliza said, we are all wearing masks at school still. We have mask breaks built into the day, and it can be challenging, but students, they understand at this point and generally are pretty compliant and respectful of them. Echoing the nurses at Norris, our nurses are doing a wonderful, wonderful job, and they just spend many extra hours doing all of this contact tracing, so very much appreciated. We're doing test and stay and symptomatic testing at Hampshire, and because so many of our students are vaccinated, we're not finding that it's been, it's been really useful but for a pretty limited number of kids, because our kids who are vaccinated don't have to follow all of these close-contact protocols. And so we just have a lot fewer close contacts than the elementary level might. Some personnel updates for this year. We had 25 new staff members. We had a lot of paras who moved on to teaching roles, which is exciting for them, but hard to fill those positions, and so we had eight, eight new paras this year, three custodians, eight classroom teachers in a variety of departments, new principal, high school assistant principal, director of student activities, high school counselor, adjustment counselor, and an athletic trainer. So quite a few new faces around the school. We have some really exciting events coming up, and I'll highlight just a couple for you. So we're really excited to be offering a Parents Night for 5th and 6th graders in the district, 5th and 6th grade parents and guardians in the district. We feel like we want to start to reach out as they, as the kids are a little bit younger before they start to think about school choice or charter schools, and we feel like if they can really hear some of the exciting things that we're doing at Hampshire, they will, they'll get excited at a younger age, and that will be able to keep more of them, which would be really great. And then the other thing to highlight is that this is the 50th year for Hampshire Regional, and so we are throwing a big birthday party in the spring, and I'm hoping for beautiful weather that day, but we're really excited for that. So that will be in May. In terms of a few things that I'm looking for for next year in our budget, like I mentioned in the beginning, we are in need of another adjustment counselor right now. And so right now at Hampshire, we have two adjustment counselors, and their caseloads are huge because of the number of students who are just really struggling and the intensity of those issues. And so it'd be really great to get an additional counselor to support those students. Another increased cost for us is going to be graduation. So last year, you may know that we did graduation for the first time in a long time at Hampshire outdoors, but along with that comes an increased cost due to the sound and the stage and lots of rentals. We livestreamed it, which seemed to be very, very popular and appreciated, a police detail and custodian over time. And so I think some people think it would be cheaper to do it on campus, and it's, it's not. There's definitely a cost associated with that. And then my third budget request would be to incorporate another Tier 2 intervention teacher at Hampshire. Two years ago, we took one of our licensed special ed teachers, and we moved her into this type of role to really meet the needs of some of our students who are not on IEPs who needed additional intervention, and so that's been great. And so that's been great. She teaches six classes a day, and really, she's supporting kids with a variety of needs, some with 504 plans and some regular education around academic support, organizational support, and other executive functioning support. It would be great to be able to have another one of those teachers because our students could really benefit from it, particularly if we could have that person specialize in some reading support for students who don't currently access it because they don't have IEPs. So those are three of the priorities that I am looking at for next year.
Great, good, thank you for that.
Any questions?
Yeah, thanks, yeah. Questions, anybody? Yeah, yeah, really, go ahead.
Hey, how are you?
Hi, I'm good, how are you?
I'm good. Lauren, I have a question. Can you explain what, you mentioned about director of student activities? Can you just explain what that person does and who they report to?
Sure. The director of student activities, he is our athletic director, and so he manages all of the athletics. And then in addition, he manages all of the extracurricular activities. And that position, I want to say it was created maybe five or six years ago. And before that, it was really just a part-time athletic director who was also a teacher. And so this position, he runs all of the extracurriculars and athletics for the whole building, and he reports directly to me.
Okay, thanks. I just have one. When you mentioned your, your, your goals, your four goals, the first one about actively and intentionally developing review systems to support the whole child, is that something that has been part of the ongoing goals and it's now just moved up to number one priority? Or is, are these not in any particular order of?
They're not in any particular order, although I would say that probably belongs at the top right now, but they're not, they were not written to be in any order.
This is something that's been kind of an ongoing program? It's nothing new specifically due to COVID and distance learning and all that kind of stuff?
Right, yeah. So that, that first goal, it's been a goal for some years with different action steps underneath it. I think right now, it's, it's our focus, but it's been there for quite some time in different iterations.
Okay, great, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, and next I think we have our district superintendent, Deanna.
Good evening, everybody. I am Deanna Bonneville, superintendent of schools. And as you know, I just started this position in July, and so far, so good. It's been very wonderful to be here. And I thought tonight I would share with you some of our district goals and some of our big district priorities, which pretty much match what Eliza and Lauren had said. And as both principals gave a shout out to the nurses, I would like to give a shout out to the administrative team, the principals, and Stephanie Foss, our nursing director. Lauren, Thanksgiving weekend was making contact trace calls, which really goes above and beyond the call of duty. So I appreciate everything my administrators have done, and Bobby's here, which is wonderful. I don't know what I would do without them. They've been wonderfully supportive. But now that we've been talking about COVID for the last year and a half, I'd like to turn the focus back to teaching and learning. So I've spent quite a bit of time in the classrooms already. I try to visit each school at least twice a month and do classroom observations with the principals. And I never knew I loved pre-K so much. That is like my favorite stop. Bam, I head there, that's my first stop in every building. I was a high school teacher, so I find that fascinating. So some of the goals that we are working on, I just gave you four. We have more, but we're working on a district improvement plan. So these will be the big, the big goals that we have. As Eliza had made, mentioned to, Nancy Parlaklash, the special ed director, and I are working to determine if we have a, we can establish a viable framework to implement a district-wide program to support behavioral needs and autistic students. So this is kind of a two-pronged approach. As Eliza had said, there are 16 students at, at Norris, and I think we could do a better job of meeting their needs as well. And my line of thinking is, at some point, you're gonna have to pay. So either you pay now at an early age with early interventions, or if it's not, if their needs are not being met, they're gonna be out of district at a later date, and it's gonna cost a lot more money. And as, with your conversation with Eliza, our goal is to first establish a successful program at Norris as a pilot program. And then if the other districts in our, in Hampshire Regional need to school choice somebody in, that would be our first step. And our second step is to open it up for like 45-day placements for other districts, which could be a really, potentially a wonderful revenue source for school. And as far as the behavioral needs do, there is a need for therapeutic classrooms. And I think we might start that first at the high school. We're just in initial discussions about that. But that's also to prevent high school dropouts. And Lauren had mentioned social emotional needs, so we really want to address those needs that have gone unmet so far. I'm not sure how many students we would service at the high school. Or of the 16 autistic kids, I'm not sure where they fall in the range of how we're gonna service them. But if you look at the costs that we pay to support them now, we hire out of district with certain agencies where we pay a lot of money for them to come to our school, behavioral analysts and technicians, and we can do that ourselves. And train paras to do the technician part, so we can perhaps pay them a couple more dollars an hour versus a lot more through, through an independent company. So that's one of the big goals that we're working on this year. I'd given you my entry plan, one of the documents that I submitted, and in it, I talk about being in the new superintendent induction program. And one of the things that we're working on is to develop a three-year district strategic plan. So I'm gonna spend this year looking at policies, procedures, data, meeting with different people and constituents and stakeholders and school committee members to really identify what our strengths and weaknesses are as a district. And then the district strategic plan would really address those needs and come up with effective strategies and ways that we can assess the program. And that would be done, that's just not a Deanna Bonneville document. That's, that's a district-wide document with input from all constituents as well. I've been meeting with the administrative leadership team every week, and it's been wonderful. And I really think that it's done wonders to strengthen our cohesive district culture and improving our communication. And as, as Francina mentioned, just as far as sharing resources and, and having those conversations, although each school system is definitely their own independent district, we could really rally and, and share our resources and help each other. So it's been great. We meet every week for a couple of hours. We talk about curriculum, a lot of COVID things, about policies and procedures. We brainstorm ideas of problems of practice if somebody's having a difficult time with something. But it's been great, the sharing of ideas. So we hope to be more, more collaborative and more unified. Just as far as Fast Bridges is an assessment tool that's not used in every school. So we would like to do that, so we can really look at data. So when students enter middle school, we can clearly identify what our strengths and areas of challenges are. And as, as both principals stated, social emotional welfare of students. So so far, we've been doing COVID safety student checks, so that's more than just pool testing, that's test and stay and the symptomatic testing. And we've been looking at various protocols and developing policies that safeguard our students about COVID. But social emotional learning curriculum across the board is, is used because of all the trauma from last year. So not only are we looking at isolation that students had from last year, but there's a lot of family trauma as well. And I've noticed over the years, especially in the last five, 10 years, everywhere, the needs of students is growing, and, but we're not accommodating those needs. And I find that guidance counselors and school adjustment counselors are spending more and more time meeting with students, especially regular education students where it's not written into their service plans. So some of the financial priorities for FY23, Open Court is the new reading program that Eliza had mentioned, and, which is based on the science of reading. Teachers do not have much professional development in this. Their days are limited in the number of how many professional development days they have. And I think Kate Mesmer and Eliza have been working to try to get a date. But if we're gonna have all this money put in for a new curriculum, you, you need to have the professional development as well. So and due to the budget constraints, the interventions were not all in place that we would have hoped. As Eliza said, there was a K through three focus for interventions, which really leaves grades four through six floundering a little bit. And while this year, we definitely used ESR funds to cover those gaps, we really need more reading interventionists next year to fully meet student needs, as well as a math interventionist. And if you look at MCAS data, I'd like to see those scores higher at Norris. And if you think about some of the other elementary schools where they have 100 and 100 students, they have the same amount of interventionists as Norris does. And I just find that inequitable, and, and I hope that we can remedy that for our students as well. The high school needs another tier-two interventionist for non-special ed students. And we just talked about the autism program. I'm not sure what that's going to cost. So we are meeting this week, I've been meeting with Nancy about this, and we are, we do have a little advisory group that we're gonna start meeting next week. And we'll hope to meet every couple of weeks so we can look at programming and visit different schools as well. The two nurses at Norris that are point nine do need to be restored to full-time status, as well as the librarian that Eliza mentioned. And in regards to addressing additional social emotional support for our students, the high school is requesting a full-time school adjustment counselor, and Norris is requesting a point five. But honestly, they could probably use more of that as well. So those are pretty much really the, the highlights. I'm just trying to, to learn all the different complexities of such an interesting district. And with COVID, you know, every day is a challenge, but I really hope that by the end of the year, I can identify our strengths and what kind of a vision and goal we need in the future. One, one simple, it's not simple, but we don't have a district mission statement. We use the high school's mission statement and mission, and their logo. So we need to discuss our core values as a, as a district with all of us to determine our mission and vision, which will then guide the strategic plan towards our big initiatives over the next three years.
Yep, sounds good, yeah. Great, and thank you for providing the rest of this information, too. We won't go through it tonight, but it's impressive to see all the, the goals and things that you've got in mind here and the various benchmarks and the steps that have already started to be taken. So thank you for putting all that together. How about any questions, thoughts?
Have I bored you to tears?
I do, but go ahead, I already-
Well, my, my questions are gonna be more on the financial side, and I know it's not on the agenda, but were we going to give Bobby a moment to address?
Yes, no, she is. I mean, we, we got a little late, but we're gonna throw her in here at the same time.
And then, I'm not sure who's gonna want the questions, whether it's gonna be the super or Bobby, but, so I can-
They can tackle them together. But let, hey, let's hang on that and see if, Renee, you've got some first?
The document you provided was really, really helpful. I really enjoyed reading the goals. I'm just curious, I know it was part of a process you're going through, but does it include meeting directly with students?
Yeah, you know, that's interesting because I was speaking with, with Kristen Smitty, who took a position at Gateway, and she has lunch with the students. And she said, "Deanna, you gotta be careful because my question to them is, what can I do to improve the district?" And she says her last response was, was to get a hot tub. And I said, "Well, they're not wrong. That really would make for a better school district." So I haven't met with focus groups with students yet. I'm just trying to get a handle by meeting the different town administrators and, and trying to keep up with the five different school committees. But I do plan on meeting with the school councils at, at the high school and with students just to find out what their experiences are and what I can do as a superintendent to make it a better experience for them as well.
My kids went to school along with Joy and Lauren, and I think a lot of us feel that Hampshire and Norris are very, very special places and for lots of reasons. And, you know, in spite of a lot of funding woes, you know, we're fortunate in the, and I find the students to always be remarkably mature and provide tremendous feedback. So I think it'd be great to actually meet with students. I think, would all like to have a hot tub, but I think they'd probably provide really good feedback. The other question I had is the regional agreement. You know, when you mentioned in the regional agreement about Cornwall Elementary School feeds up to Hampshire Regional, but they're not part of the regional agreement. We're having a 50th year of the Hampshire Regional High School. The regional agreement is very outdated, extremely outdated. And I think at one point, when the, when the stationary of the school changed to six schools, one district.
Right.
Yeah, I didn't really support that at all because I don't think they had school committee representation at the time, and I don't think they were part of the agreement, even though we were sharing some administrative, it was before your time. But anyway, I just think that it might be a good idea to look at the regional agreement at some point. I think it is very outdated, and that's a big task, but I just wanted to mention that. And just the last thing is, you know, a lot of people talk about diversity, and yet they don't often talk about how people's health are negatively affected by being parts of disadvantaged groups. And so I applaud all the attention to emotional, behavioral, and social learning. I don't think in my schooling, I learned about the internment camps by, of Japanese people. So I think that there's a lot of focus right now on history and what gets included and not included, and I just appeal to continue to forge on and discuss about how people's health are significantly negatively impacted by being parts of groups that actually get bullied and things like that. So I applaud those efforts.
Yeah, great. Yeah, and I think I would just, moving on to the idea of a, of a district strategic plan, I think the whole idea of, of having a common purpose and really clarifying that mission statement and being sure that everybody's core values and, and, you know, perspectives are at least aligned, they won't be all the same, but at least they're aligned with the others within the district and, and with yours. I mean, I think that makes for effective leadership on your part. So I would encourage you to, to keep on pursuing that strategy for sure, because I think that's the way to go, to get all that buy-in from the different schools and, you know, get everybody thinking along the same line with what they would like to see in terms of the outcomes of education.
Definitely.
Great. Anything else? Okay, if not, why don't we have Bobby come up and, as the business administrator, and give us a, an addendum, shall we say?
I'm Bobby, business administrator for the district. And as you all got my report at the 11th hour, I'll just kind of recap what I put. Currently, what I'm working on is budgets for the five schools. The first thing I have to do is the assessment to all the schools, and that is based on the October 1 data that I get generally towards the end of October. So that has been done, and I have actually done the central office budget for all schools as was requested, and that will start to be presented at each school committee at the regular meeting. And then also at the five district agreement working group. So it's really actually a good thing that we did this because I think that'll do great at that meeting, just to be able to show some of the nuances and things that are different and help give me some guidance as to what we should do with those nuances. So other than that, I've also been closing out the five schools and doing six end-of-year reports. That's all been done. As far as that goes, I just want to say that we had an administrative assistant hired this year for us in central office, a lot to help me in my role and as well as to assist the superintendent. And I want to say that for the first time in probably 17 years, the four, no, five out of the six end-of-year reports were turned in on time. And probably two months prior to other years. So I just want to say that that is working out. We have a long way to go, but that is one thing that's helped, as well as helping me to get to, hopefully get to budgets a little bit earlier than in past. For budget concerns, really, everything's on track with the budget. There are some special education costs that were not budgeted for that could be a concern. I'll be keeping an eye on that. As you know, we just put a Band-Aid on the Norris budget, and we will need to address that at some point. Both schools, both principals really put forward the best budget they can to instruct the kids. and to give the kids the best education. And what we're going to try to do this year in regards to that is hopefully share out the regional budget to the elementary schools prior to it being voted, just so that everybody can see what's happening and why she's requesting what she's requesting versus what the elementary schools are requesting. So that's another change that we're going to have for this year. And then for the next four to six months, basically, it will be working on budgets. And it will be working with the auditors to get the audits done for the two regional school districts and just the everyday normal activities. You know, the day-to-day watching over the current budget and that sort of thing.
Thanks. A quick one. You mentioned rural aid, both for Norris and for Hampshire Regional. Could you just talk about that? Is that a state grant or what is that and what can it be used for?
I'm going to let Deanna answer that because she answers it much better than I do.
It can really be used for anything.
Come up to the mic if you would, please.
Sorry.
This is the first year that all of the schools received some form of rural aid. And all the schools were listed priority one, except Norris was just priority two. And it's kind of based on how many miles. Priority one is 11 students per square mile or less that are being serviced. And I think Norris falls in the 11 to 22 miles, but don't quote me on that. While they would like it to be used for collaboration, they're kind of vague on that. It really can be used for anything. And I think, oh, I had the report. 67 schools in Massachusetts qualified, so we were happy. And Norris did receive around $35,000, which is wonderful. We needed that to offset certain costs.
And the source, is that state or federal?
It's a state. It was what was passed recently by a lot of lobbying by the Western Mass.
Senator Heinz, is that the Senator Heinz one from mostly from the Hilltown area? Yeah, okay.
And just to build on that, just to clarify on that. So how did the funds, have the funds come in? And if so, how did they flow? And did they flow from the state to Hampshire Regional to then be dispersed? And the reason I'm asking the question is because we have the latest receipts and it's not listed. So I don't know if it was blended in with Chapter 70 funds.
I think it is separate from, yep, there you go.
I can check on that for you, John, but it should come right to your...
To the town and then flow up?
Yeah, right through an EFT.
Okay.
Yeah, and I will check tomorrow to see if the town's...
Because traditionally, we haven't received it here. I mean, my guess is that there's probably a question mark somewhere. This hasn't come in before. What do we do with it? And knowing that that department is new here is one.
Was it being used? How are the funds being used?
It can be used for just about anything.
Is it for this fiscal year? Is it for the school year? So has it been decided yet how it's being used?
No. Not that we've all discussed together. I'm sure they have 500 thoughts as to how they're going to do with that. Just making a note.
And then I know that this year, the Durham contract is up, right? So does it renew on July 1st, the busing contract? And I'm sure it's too early to tell, but do you have a gut feeling? Is it going to stay flat? Do you think it's going to increase or decrease?
I'm going to say it's definitely going to increase. I saw something on one of my listservs today that one of the schools out, and thank God it's out east, but their contract came and they went up to bid, and it was a 39% increase.
Yeah, and especially with the way we budgeted here, that's a line item on the town side. And as next month, we start our budget process, I think it's safe to assume that that line item is going to go up. And then just again, because you do the regional budgets ahead of time first, not ahead of time. What, if anything, do you have for initial thoughts? Are you coming, are you thinking you're going to be coming in at the 2%, the 2.5%, the 5%, the 1%? Just again, so we could do like a placeholder on our end, on the select board side, as we start to move forward?
For the high school and the elementary budget?
Well, the regional. I'm pretty comfortable speaking on Norris.
For the regional, it depends. Like, I'm assuming we're going to come in pretty close to 2.5 or under, on the budget side. But what that means on the assessment side is a different number.
Right.
And I can't tell you that until I actually get to see those numbers, which won't come out until late December, early January.
Okay.
Just remind me, do we know, I'm sure you know, how many students from Southampton are at Hampshire Regional? Do we know? Okay.
Four...
About 50%, right?
Yeah, it used to be like, I'm thinking 480, but I could be wrong.
From Southampton?
52% if I remember correctly.
It's 55%.
55, that's what it's been, yeah.
I can't imagine the busing is going to be even or less, given the price of gas and everything else. But if the state paid regional transportation the way they promised way back when, we wouldn't be in the boat we're in.
Right, that's true. That is true.
Any further comments, questions?
One more on the rule aid. Do you anticipate that to continue year after year? Or was this a one-time, do you think right now it's just a one-time?
We've gotten it in two of our other schools. This will be the third year. So I'm thinking it's part of the reform under the Chapter 70 reform. And they've decided to keep it out of the actual Chapter 70 funds, which I think is great. So I am anticipating it will continue, but I don't know what the dollar amount will increase or decrease. So for Chesterfield Goshen, who's gotten it, this is their third year. They went down about $10,000 from what they got the previous year. They got like 26 the previous year and 21, and then this year, they only got 16. So I think it depends on how many schools are going to be eligible and then what the pot is.
And then, this isn't a question, but this is a comment, being, you know, not the nurse, but the finance. I can tell you, you know, I don't have enough positive things to say about Bobby and her team. And there are times we don't see eye to eye, but it's usually just over the numbers. And she has done a tremendous amount of work during this whole transition with the superintendent to get Dr. Bonneville in there now and working with this all-district working agreement, which we're never going to be unanimous on. But we've made tremendous progress on this. And just the simple thing of getting all the communities to agree that the health insurance for central office staff should be in the central office budget because that translates to a lesser number to Southampton, which is fair and equitable, versus putting in the regional budget, we pay 55 cents on the dollar. So I think that was like a $32,000 adjustment, which is why last year, while the regional budget went up, the impact to Southampton was only 1%. You know, and just having Bobby there, and hopefully she'll be there another 10 years. But with the 17 years of knowledge that you have...
If my husband has his way, I will be.
But the more we can take advantage of your knowledge now and why things are working the way they are and pass that knowledge on to the new team that's in there, you know, I'll support a five-year or 10-year agreement for you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bobby.
I just want to say thank you to everybody that's here.
Yeah, sure, yeah. Come on up, Margaret, yeah.
I was just going to say thank you to the school committee members that are here, too. John Lumber included. You know, it's not easy these last couple of years in healthcare, but it's also not easy at all being in schools. And so I really appreciate all you're doing.
Yeah, absolutely. So I'm Margaret Larson, and I'm the chair at Hampshire Regional. So I first want to extend my deepest appreciation to both Dr. Bonneville and to Lauren. So these are people who are taking a new job, which is challenging enough in a regional district. And then you add COVID on top of that. And they have been transparent, responsive, helpful, provided guidance for us as school committee and been on the ball very consistently. Of course, Bobby has always been thus for us. And we're doing quite a bit in school committee about educating our members about the budget. A lot of Budget 101 kind of information. And Bobby has been doing more presentations to us, just more transparency across the board, which I think is helpful. Speaking from the school committee, so we have a couple of new members, two of whom are here tonight, so Dylan and Heather, as well as Jerry Jennings. And it has been really a blessing, I think, for Southampton to have some new people on school committees. So we have a couple of veterans, myself and Bill Curran. And we have some new people who are offering new perspectives, very thoughtful comments, ideas, ways for us to progress. And I think John might agree with me on this, that in the past, school committees have been reactive. And I think we're trying to be a little bit more proactive. And so we, the five chairs meet once a month. And we're not a decision-making body, obviously, but we talk about common challenges that we're having and maybe what needs to be on our agendas in a common manner. And then we can bring back and discuss issues that we're having, which has been very helpful, and that's been led by Dr. Bonneville. And in addition to that, we are actively involved with MASC, which is the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. In fact, they're coming to our next meeting to talk about our role as school committee, to make sure that we're staying in our lane appropriately and focusing on the right things, which is generally policy and budget. And so that's some of the Budget 101 kinds of things are, okay, let's really focus. And if we're focusing on these items, we should know those items very well. And then I think the last thing is the five districts working group that we're working on in order to work with the central office budget, superintendent hiring and evaluation. And I suspect that the regional agreement would be on the list next as well. So, and thank you to Select Board for being so responsive to us and, you know, entertaining our ideas and the ways we want to take this call. So thank you for that, too.
Well, thank you. And thank you, everyone, for coming and sharing your thoughts and perspectives tonight. It's really been helpful for all of us and especially to have given us some things ahead of time to read and kind of digest. Sometimes it's a little bit foreign for those of us that are not involved in it on a daily basis to understand some of the issues and terminology that you deal with. But this has been very, very helpful. So thank you very, very much for coming. And you're welcome to stay or you may depart, however you draw. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do want to make a comment. I mean, reports like we heard tonight and what we hear every week, I think is so important to residents to keep them informed of what's happening in the various departments. I think it's a great addition, you know, to the meetings. I know it adds a little more time, but the information is certainly worth it. And it is all in the interest of transparency. And I think it goes a long way.
Yep, no, thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to appointments and resignations. We have a few appointments tonight. Let's see if I can find the right ones here. Okay, we have a first one. Charlie Knickie is requesting to be appointed to the capital committee. Term would expire June 30th, 2024. We have a letter from Charlie saying that he had previously served for about six years on the committee and feels that he can be of service. Well, I think we could just take that one. And then should we take the two together and then the rest of them are kind of grouped? I'm trying to think of the easiest way to do this.
Well, I'd like to make a comment about this. First of all, did he fill out the form to be on a committee?
Oh, he sent the letter.
Okay, I thought our standard was that everybody fill out the form just so that it's consistent and all the questions get answered the same way. That would be my request. I actually don't support this appointment because I think if you're on a building committee, I think that being on capital, even though we don't have a bylaw that opposes that, the finance committee, people are not supposed to be on any other committee. If anyone's on a school building committee or a senior center building committee or a public safety building committee, I don't support them being on capital. There's been a request for appointment for both of these committees at the same time. And so I just feel like there's just not enough objectivity. So I cannot support it.
Interesting perspective. Can we, maybe I guess the way to go through this, though, is to have a motion on the floor and then discuss?
Okay.
Well, I would, point of order.
Yes, go ahead.
I believe what's before us is a letter of interest. If we only act upon applications and an application hasn't been filled out nor is it before us, I don't think there's anything for us to act upon.
Well, I think, I'm not sure how...
And again, I'm just, I'm assuming, I'm taking Maureen at her word that that's the process.
Yeah. We definitely have the volunteer application form on our website. I think people generally know that it's there. I don't know if we have something that we have ever, I don't know, prior to me, made clear whether a letter of interest is sufficient or it's the letter and the actual application. I don't know. Ed, can you speak to any of that or?
I don't know if the board has ever taken an official vote. From my own, shall we say, personal opinion, the form has value where the appointments are for filling elected terms because they're checked by the town clerk. However, in my own personal opinion, I think the form lacks some questions or pulling information out of people. So I would say either maybe the board think about a letter and an application or redoing the application to get more information out of people's education or professional backgrounds.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm in favor of that. I think the more information, looking at people's skills and how well-matched they are for different positions in the town. I think that's a good idea.
Well, I'm looking at the following one. And it does ask, please list education, professional achievement, skills, and so forth, which is not in the letter. So I think at the very least, since it says application to serve by a town, board, or committee, we should require that everybody use that. And most people do.
So at this point...
Where, I'm sorry, Chris. When these, like when these letters come in... Or I should say, when the application comes in, who do they come to?
Go to Ed.
Maybe the town administrator. Then perhaps we just ask the town administrator just to forward off an email or a letter to this individual thanking them for the letter, but could you please fill out the application? And then we can bring it up. Separate to that, we can talk about redoing the whole process.
All right. So can I have a motion of some sort to that effect?
I'll make the motion.
We would pass this over tonight?
I'll second it.
All right. Any more discussion on that?
I think we have to be clear about the motion because you said pass over and you said...
That we...
Right.
That we're accepting it and we're communicating with them that we'd like to consider it, but you have to follow this process.
Okay. Have to fill out the application form. Yeah, I stand corrected. Okay.
No, I seconded that.
All right. All those in favor, then, of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't hear any opposition, so that's the situation. Okay. Next one is Cindy Palmer. This is a request for an appointment to the Public Safety Complex Building Committee. This term would expire June 30th, 2024. This one is filled out on the town's volunteer form that's online and signed off on by Lucy as a voter registration confirmation. Basically here, if I can read this, from Cindy, "The most applicable experience I bring to this application is a three-plus-year member of the planning board and several other town committees. Further, I'm a senior myself, age 71, and I'm informed that the Friends of Southampton Council on Aging voted to have me represent seniors. Though other seniors are certainly welcome to serve, I'm not coming as a planning board representative or appointee."
Yeah. And just to be clear, it was the Friends of the Council on Aging, not the Council on Aging Board.
Okay.
And I just wanted to mention that on, I believe, the 21st of December, the agenda includes addressing the Public Safety Building Committee, the charge, as well as the composition.
It does?
So it's almost a little bit of the cart before the horse. And having previously appointed Charlie and now an application. And I know that I said the importance of having seniors on there. I did mention as a liaison to Council on Aging about having a representative from the seniors, but everybody was feeling pretty stretched because some people are on the senior center building committee. And other people, Josie, for example, stepped up to be on PQB. So they don't have somebody. So I would support this, but I wonder if we should wait and hold off from public safety meeting or appointing anybody else until the next meeting?
Okay. I think one of the things that we had, you know, you had relayed, was the idea of having a broader committee and having more representation of people in town. That we were concerned last time, I think, as we talked about the level of support that we might have for the public safety complex in general. So the idea of having somebody representing seniors, I think, is a good one. But we actually have not taken that agenda item to talk about the composition of the committee itself. So I think we had thought that we... itself, because I think we had thought that we would be relooking at the composition as well as the charge, and that wouldn't be on until our 21st meeting.
On December 21st?
December 21st, yeah.
So, would it be appropriate to make a motion to lay this on the table until December 21st?
Okay.
And I'll second that, though.
I would think that would be appropriate. Any further thoughts on that discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, so be it. No opposition, okay. Next, all right, now, next is, and I will say that we have not filled out, I have not filled out the paperwork. I guess we have to. Yes, we have four people for this new ad hoc cost efficiencies committee. Ed Gibson as the town administrator, we had set the, the, the membership here, so Ed as the town administrator, it had been decided that John and myself would represent Select Board, and then Vicky Morrow has been designated by the finance committee as the finance representative to the committee. All of these terms, as we had done, I think, for previously, on the previous meeting, we had set the term just to November 30th, 2022, to get things started, and so we do have these four names. There is no paperwork. Do us those, go with these, so if we want to be consistent.
But at least, I agree, but I think there's a little bit difference here, and I don't know, typically, when somebody attends a committee meeting as a liaison from, is that still, I guess we should clarify that.
Yeah, I, I don't.
All four of these appointments are all people that are representing either the Select Board or the finance committee, and that might be a little different.
Yeah, I don't see these as volunteer, in the volunteer capacity.
Okay, these are more just designated people representing.
Designated appointments, exactly.
Yep. Any, anybody else have thoughts about that, Joy?
I think other people that are.
Do volunteers have terms?
Yeah, we have terms here.
Yeah.
That's what I'm, I'm just.
Yeah, and this is consistent.
In general, though, do, or when we appoint someone to a, with a term, we usually have, we usually have that form, though.
Usually, basically, the, the form, well, the, the, the terms are done in a staggered fashion, you know, per, per the, the rules of that committee itself, but usually there's a one-year, and a two-year, and a three-year appointment. As an ad hoc committee, like we had done with Tech and with Grant, we were only appointing people for one year, just to get it off the ground and see if it was worth continuing as a actual committee.
Did the other ad hoc committees have to fill out the forms?
They did.
They did, okay.
I think a lot of them did. I don't know if everybody did, but I think a lot of them did.
They were, they were not representing the Select Board.
It was a new committee, yeah.
There were new committees, new volunteers, who were not associated with any other boards, not representing any other.
Brand-new, brand-new faces in general, that were not even from other committees, yeah.
Well, it's a good question, though, we should probably.
We should tidy that up for sure.
Yeah, I, I think the difference here is, we said, the, the makeup of this, that went out to, and I forget what the makeup was, that the finance committee, I think it's finance, capital, and somebody else in that group.
Right, and planning.
No, but within that, within that finance, there were three groups, and we said, one of the three of you has to come and be appointed to this. So, it wasn't like a free-for-all, so, in, in Vicky's case, she's the one coming from that cluster.
Right.
You know, Ian's coming from the public safety cluster.
Yes, we've already appointed the other four, so.
Yeah.
Lisa from, from school, and then Janet Kane's another cluster, Ian's one, and Bradley's on the other clusters. We've already done four appointments to the committee, so.
Liaison, I think it's a little bit different.
A little bit.
Be open to, going differently.
But there's also open, there's open seats to the public, they have to fill out.
So, those would be applicants, yes.
Yeah, I think we just need to clarify that, there's some members that need to fill out the form, and the ones that are representing already elected or appointed officials do not.
Or employees.
Or employees.
Right, we, and we have stated that those that would be coming in from the town perspective, people that we were hoping to have in as volunteers with financial background or HR background, would send in their interest to, to Ed with that form, and a letter of interest to go along with it, I believe. So, that is not, I don't believe we've had any of those thus far, but I would hope that we could get going on the committee, and, and eventually, you know, I, I don't think we can hold up until we have a full 12-person committee. I think we need to start moving somehow, so.
Right, I agree.
All right, so I think I'm hearing that everybody's okay to take up these appointments tonight, as.
Yeah, I mean, there are other plunies, yeah.
Commissions.
I'll make a motion, then, to approve Vicky Morrow, ad hoc efficiency, cost efficiencies committee, representing the finance representative, term to expire November 30th, 2022. Chris Falls, representing the Select Board to the same committee, term to expire November 30th, 2022. John Lumbras, representing the Select Board, term to expire November 30th, 2022, and Ed Gibson, town administrator, term to expire November 30th, 2022.
I'll second.
Okay. If no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, but that just does point out, we need to be a little bit clearer, perhaps, in some of our, we have a, actually, one of the bylaws that, the bylaws committee has worked on is, is membership in committees, that is a new one that is being, has been worked on, so maybe we need to tinker with that a little bit more closely, too, to be sure that that's all very well-understood. Okay, moving on to reports. Town Administrator Ed, I'm turning it over to you for now.
Certainly. Updates. The Attorney General's Office has contacted us about participating and receiving settlement funds from two statewide settlements with three opioid distributors, Cardinal McKesson, and AmerisourceBergen, and opioid, opioid maker Johnson &amp; Johnson. The more municipalities which join this settlement, the more the distributors and J&amp;J will pay under these settlements. I will add this to an agenda item to the December 21st Select Board meeting agenda, as the deadline to file will be January 2nd. We would be able to register our participation online. At last night's Board of Health meeting, the Board of Health voted, due to the increase in positive COVID-19 numbers in the state and locally, and in our surrounding communities, that they recommended that the Select Board postpone the special town meeting until the positive numbers started dropping again, maybe a February timeframe or early March. If it were not possible to postpone the special town meeting, then they asked if it was possible to reduce the number of articles, and if it was possible to have the meeting split between two large rooms to make it more feasible for social distancing. STANTEC has submitted further information regarding drainage flow and road pitch to MassDOT in regard to the shared streets grant for the college highway sidewalk. We are now waiting for MassDOT to approve the access permit and STANTEC's recommended changes to the drainage design. Vicky Morrow is working with Bradley Oxon, a town accountant, and the assessors to complete the forms necessary for our town fiscal year '22 tax recap submittals to the Department of Revenue. They should be completed either today or tomorrow. The actual start of the demolition of the East Street Bridge is scheduled to start this week, in fact, I think it actually began today. Hoyok Gas &amp; Electric was working with the bridge contractor yesterday and today to ensure that the old gas line is abandoned, capped, and purged of gas. Just to let you know, the assessors' office will be closed several days this week due to an illness with one of the department employees. And then, upcoming Select Board meeting, December 21st, special town meeting, December 14th, at 7:00 PM at Norris Elementary School, maybe, and Select Board meeting, meetings for January, to be determined.
Okay, I'd like to suggest that we discuss the yays and nays about a special town meeting in a couple more items a little bit further down the agenda, rather than taking it on Any comments, questions for Ed on his report, however?
No, and I just want to make a statement, and there won't be a question, but it's on B, given that you want to talk about that later on. I'm sure, maybe, I wasn't at the meeting last night, but for the record, a significant investment has been made in Norris, that every room is equipped with the iWaves, and the HVAC system has been tested repeatedly with MERV 13 filters, and they are replaced three times during the nine-month school period, so every 90 days. So, I just want that as part of the record, and then we can talk about it later.
Sure, okay.
I just have a question on the first one, Ed. Are we going to get paperwork before the 21st about that?
What's that?
About the, the settlement? Is there paperwork that we're going to get to read before that?
I can send you the link to the online forms.
Okay, I'd like to read it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, I know something came through on email today, but I haven't seen much information about it at all, so. And then, regarding the, the tax recap, so, once that is done within, that's got to be completed by the, well, it had to be completed by the 30th, right?
Well, you want it completed before that, because of the fact that, then it takes time to, it'll take DOR probably a day or so to approve the actual submittals and tax rate, and then the, that has to be input and transmitted to, to actually print and send out the tax bills.
I think Chris was referring to November 30th.
Yeah, I thought it had to be submitted, the tax recap had to be submitted to DLS by November 30th, if that's not right.
That's what we thought.
Okay.
Right, so, Chris, just where that's coming from, and Ed had clarified that before for, I guess, probably in a sidebar conversation, is best practices, DOR, that's the date for it to go in, and that's what Ms. West was looking at.
Okay.
When she gave us that date.
Got it, okay. But somewhere within the next day or two, that should happen, and we could be all okay with that? And do we know yet, we don't know yet what our tax rate will be, then? Okay, all right.
Something under $75.
It'll actually go down, and it'll go down probably about a dollar.
And the assessments went up.
Huh?
Just like most other towns, but the assessments went up.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
The values have gone up.
Right, values have gone up, yeah, exactly. Okay, thanks. Let's move on to Select Board reports, do we have a few this time? John, I'll start with you.
Sure, so PPPB Board met last night, and we can take everything up later on on the agenda, under signatures, when that comes up. I did attend the finance committee meeting, and I know there was a question for me to come back with, I'm going to have to dig up my notes. Do you want to?
Okay.
Come back to me.
We'll move ahead, yeah. Francine, something?
Okay, the bylaws committee met on December 1st. They finalized the organization of the, the indexing that will be used by the company E360, or general code, to build our comprehensive and comprehensive, comprehensible online bylaw document. We made some minor adjustments to the naming of public buildings and structures, which we will review later tonight on, on the agenda. We established a schedule for public posting and comment for dog and dog kennel draft bylaws, as we did with previous drafts of, of bylaws of public interest. A document will be posted online for people to comment, and a public meeting will also be scheduled for in-person comment before the final draft is produced. We expect that the drafts will be posted early to mid-January, and that a public meeting will be held on February 8th, 2022, unless there are some mitigating circumstances around gathering as a result of COVID. The Board of Health, as Ed mentioned, met last night. It was reported that there are currently 51 active COVID cases in Southampton, 20 of which are at Norris School. Based.
How many at Norris?
20. Based on our current situation, the Board of Health will request an extension of funding for the contact tracer position through June 2022, given the fact that there's been, there's been a rise, and obviously, an increase in, in, in the work of, of, of tracing people who have been exposed. The main focus of the discussion of the meeting, as Ed talked about, was recommendations on the safe contact of the special town meeting, scheduled for next, a week from tonight, at the Norris Cafeteria. And in priority order, their first choice was postpone it. If we can't postpone it, because we don't get extensions on some of the important items that have to be voted on, then they're recommending that the warrant articles be reduced significantly to reduce the amount of time that people are together, and also to arrange for a, a second room for overflow to accommodate the six-foot distance between participants, in addition to having people masked, all right? We talked about the protocols to sanitize the meeting space before and after, as well as microphones, and taking all other necessary precautions in terms of registering, and so on and so forth. Right now, the Board of Health is deferring any decision regarding changes in masking. They are also recommending to the school committee that masking at Norris continue for the foreseeable future, regardless of the vaccination rate in the school. They are planning to hold a vaccine clinic at Norris School over the Christmas holiday for students and adult Southampton residents, and more information will follow. The health director conducted a follow-up regarding septic concerns in the Hampton Ponds area. A review of previous design plans with possible enhancements will be held to plan the system upgrade, if needed. With regard to the water break at Southampton Meadows, the Board of Health felt that the building management response was quick and appropriate. Residents of that building were immediately and temporarily relocated to hotels, and as of yesterday, all but 11 people have returned to their apartments. Carpeting has been removed and replaced, thorough cleaning, and residents have been reimbursed for any lost food items. Next, the health agent reported she's been very busy with routine inspections, and is experiencing an increase in the Title V inspections due to an increase in septic repairs, which, to which no one can attribute the cause. But anyway, she's, she's on the move. And then, finally, their next meeting is scheduled for January 3rd at 5:00 PM, and the Norris School Committee meets tomorrow night, 6 o'clock here.
Okay, that's it.
Francine, did the Board of Health discuss a mandatory mask mandate?
Did they discuss it?
A mask mandate in Southampton?
They talked about it, and then the, it's, the concern is that it would be applied to private entities, and whether or not they could be, would they be enforced? So, they were going to have conversations, I think, with some of the, some of the businesses, but they said they would defer making a decision on it till their next meeting, or unless something comes up, I guess, in between. I don't know if that answers your question, but that was, that was the discussion.
Okay, all right. Winnie, anything from your committees?
Yeah, CPC is meeting tomorrow night to discuss the article for the warrant relative to the funding of particularly the park grant. Otherwise, they haven't met. COA met on the 1st of December, the continuing memory cafes, you can check the newsletter for additional programming. There's program coordinator, job description is going to PQB, is also a temporary admin assistant with PQB. There's initial group looking at the steps of a design and plan for a new senior center. Couple people went to Hadley yesterday and had a really good visit, planning going to Salt Hadley, and talking to the director there. The COA's next meeting is the 5th of January. The Board of Assessors met on the 29th of November, last Monday. They're addressing applications for exemptions, they're still recruiting a principal assessor, it's posted on Indeed, and they're meeting again on the 13th at 4:00 PM. Ed mentioned about the, the office. And then, Public Safety hasn't met, and we're addressing the composition and goals of this committee on the 21st of December.
Okay, thanks.
Sure, um, hold on, let me pull my notes up. So, Open Space had not met since my last report, but they're meeting December 9th at 7:00 PM, I believe that's this Thursday. Conservation Commission met last night, they discussed the ever-source funds from the settlement, and they, I did receive a concerned email from the chair in regards to people still walking on man-hand meadows when they shouldn't be, because we do have signs out there to, it is closed due to the conditions of the trail, and was requesting what the town's liability would be if people were, were still, were ignoring those signs. I could get into a legal analysis of that myself, but I think it has to do with comparative negligence. I think that there's also much that the town can do.
I mean, as long as signs are posted, the signs are pretty visible, in terms of the trail being closed, or the area being closed, so I think people have to take it on their own personal responsibility.
Exactly, and we're still always looking for volunteers, the Conservation Commission. Their next meeting is December 20th at 6:00 PM over Zoom. I did go to the library trustee meeting, particularly because they do have the article on the town warrant. They wanted to know what the retirement fund was, so, because they were concerned that that would be questioned at the town meeting, and I didn't have an exact answer for them at that moment, so I can always get back to them with an answer. But just for future reference, it's most likely going to come up at town meeting, I'm sure. Conserva, or Planning Board met last week. There was. There was a lively discussion about the inclusionary bylaw, but it seems in general, there's a consensus in regards to affordable housing that the town needs a housing trust and step towards town sewer if we are going to be looking at any kind of affordable housing in the future. And their next meeting is December 15th at 7:00 PM, I believe they're going to be discussing cluster development. Housing Authority met last night, and there's a presentation from two individuals, two business, local businessmen, who are looking to do a project on College Highway that includes affordable housing. And they are going to be approaching CPC in the future, and, and we're working with them to make every, their idea more feasible and presentable to the town. And so their next Housing Authority meeting is January 3rd at 6:00 PM, bug at 6:00 PM.
Okay, good.
So, back on the Finance Committee, so they met and reviewed the Special Town Meeting articles. They, the ones that they took exception to and voted against was the transfer station for the $25,000. Their position on it was that you can't spend retained earnings after June 30th until they're certified again. And then the, they were, they questioned whether or not the, the line item, I know it's not, ambulance receipts had sufficient funds in it to justify both the $68,000 of debt service and the $30,000 request, based on the reports they were looking at. And then just in general conversation, and I'm sure, you know, everything comes down to timing. I wonder if going forward, it might be appropriate that before we start discussing or finalizing on warrants or voting on articles, they go through Finance first. Sitting there and listening to some of their reasoning and thought process, I'm not saying it would have necessarily changed my mind on how I voted on certain things, but I would have been more informed. So, I know timing is always an issue, but I guess it would be good to have it vetted before it got to us, if that's even possible. That's all.
Thought for the future. Alright, good. Okay, moving on, the Grant Committee, Ad-Hoc Grant Committee, we met just recently, and have started work in collaboration with Chief Workman on the Hazard Mitigation Planning Grant, which is what we're going to try to corral for the update of the Hazard Mitigation Plan. This is actually a rolling application, so the sooner we get it in, the better. We're hoping to be able to get it in by the middle of January. There's usually about a six-month wait until you actually hear about it. And our, right now, our Hazard Mitigation Plan is active, and it will expire at the end of January. As long as we have applied to a grant program, it's okay that it expires while we're waiting to hear about the grant. We verified that with the state. And we've been in touch with PVPC to get some idea of costing. PVPC would be the likely technical assistance provider to help us do that, given that they helped put the first one, or the last one together. And this would be an update process, but this application for the HMPG grant is much simpler than others that we were looking at, and it looks like it's not going to be terribly complicated to apply for. So that's going to be our first thing. We are still looking at a couple of other grants on the horizon. Open Space has been interested a little bit in what's called a LWCF grant, which is the Land Water Conservation Fund. And they're asking a few questions about that, and we may get involved in, in helping do something there. And we're still checking out the MVP and the BRIC grant opportunities. And I, I have started to draft a note, based on the, what I saw of sort of some of the priorities out of the MVP plan. I was going to draft a note out to relevant town employees that have been involved in some of this, especially like highway water, some of our folks that are involved in, in vulnerability planning in particular, and see what kind of ideas they might have for priority projects. Because right now, we don't have a particular project in mind to actually apply for those, but those are coming on the horizon as well. And probably last but not least, when I gave the grant report a few weeks ago, I think I had mentioned that we had one grant pending, and I'm excited to say that we, the Grant Committee actually just heard that we are also awarded a grant from the Community Compact IT program, and this is for $51,070, oh-seven-oh. It's about twenty, $21,000 less than what we had asked for, but that's okay. And this is basically through the Ad-Hoc Tech Committee to start working on cybersecurity issues here at Town Hall. So that's really a great, great result, so I will say that the Grant Committee thus far is six for six.
Congratulations, that is awesome.
I think I'm gonna knock on wood and hope that our luck continues in FY22, or calendar 22.
There's a yodel there, knock on wood there.
I know, something. Anyway, so that's, that's it, so that was, that was good.
You're going, Ed.
We weren't sure we were going to get that, and a big shout out especially to the Ad-Hoc Tech Committee and Kim Florrick in particular, who was really a driver in terms of the technical specs that were needed, as well as our folks through this new PVPC IT collaborative that we joined. All kind of came together in, in good, good timing, okay?
Chris, I'm wondering if either you or Ed could explain something? So we became, we, we got money from, I think, PVPC. Can you explain about the hazard mitigation? We're, we have been designated a community, but now we're going to use the grant process to then update our hazard mitigation plan.
We're an MVP community.
We're MVP community, right. So could you just explain that whole process, like where are we going with this? And it just seems like it's, feels, it's just confusing a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, the HMPG is, is a planning grant specifically for updating kinds of plans.
Okay.
Rather than a hardcore project, whereas I think both the BRIC and the MVP, as I understand it, are much more hands-on, you know, shovel-in-the-dirt kinds of projects, is my understanding.
Didn't we also talk about the BRIC program, which is the federal government? Didn't we also talk about that, using that, those funds are applying to update our emergency management plan?
No, we had talked about that to update our Hazard Mitigation Plan, which is expiring.
Okay, so now we're shifting, instead of thinking about it being a BRIC application to being.
Going to a much simpler one, yeah.
Okay, alright.
That's federal money, which.
That's what I wasn't sure.
It's, it's like overkill for what we need to do. If it was maybe starting brand-new to plan things, maybe.
Yeah, okay.
But an updated process shouldn't have to be as complicated. So this HMPG one that, actually, the folks at PVPC recommended would be the simplest way to go. And looking at the application, it really is.
And it's separate then from the actual applying for a grant from the Hazard Mitigation Program to do an actual intervention.
Correct.
Towards one of the things we identified.
Right, so that would be through the, yeah, that would be the MVP or the BRIC grant to actually figure out, okay, if we've got, you know, vulnerability number one, are we ready to start talking about that and do a design of some kind of action? So it's much more of an action-oriented grants rather than this HMPG one, okay?
Okay, thank you, yep.
But I, you know, I wasn't involved in the MVP process, that's why I want to go back and look at the plan itself and see what came out as some of the highlights. And then I'm gonna send a, from the Grant Committee, send a note out to the various people that seem to be more relevant, and I'm assuming it's highway and water in particular, and maybe others, fire and police as well. Board of Health perhaps, to say, okay, out of this, you know, do you have some projects in mind that we need to start really thinking about, because that was, those are coming up pretty quick, so I'm not sure. We, I don't, I don't think we could do both, we could do maybe one of those two, but.
Yeah.
That's why we want to get the Hazard Mitigation Planning one out of the way, because it seems pretty simple. And I think we can keep on moving with that one.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Thanks.
Alright. Okay, old business. Let's go to Audit Update, Outstanding Issues and Questions, Ed?
Yes, and you have, have the questions that are outstanding in your packet, and I actually have had a chance to answer a couple of them. And now that the development of the warrant for the Special Town Meeting is out of the way, I'll be able to concentrate with Bradley on responding to the remaining questions that are out there to finish off the audit with Melanson.
Any projections on when we'll have this wrapped up?
I would say we'll have it wrapped up by the end of the month.
Okay. Any further questions about that?
Are there any penalties for any, our deadline date?
Not really. Just to, just to get our bond rating back in place.
Alright, if nothing, we'll move on. The Annual Audit Contract Scope of Work. This was, now is this the audit contract, or this was the closeout of FY21, Ed?
I think we were, we're hoping that we heard back from another vendor.
Yeah.
We did, and I think, I think the, the item actually covered the two separate topics, so. We did hear back from Eric Kinsherf, and their estimation of the work was that it would take approximately 200 hours at $150 an hour, so they were saying $30,000.
And he would be able to start, he said not before January anyway, which is right around the corner, so that doesn't really matter, okay? So we have two, two possibilities, okay? And obviously, if we did one, that affects our auditing going forward, right? If we were to take Melanson, we can't use them as our auditor going forward, is that what I understand?
You wouldn't be able to use them as your auditor for any particular fiscal year that they did that work.
That they did that work, yeah.
Right.
Right, so, okay.
And just refresh my memory, the, the quote from Melanson was how much?
Thirty-five to fifty.
Thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-five to fifty.
To fifty thousand, yes.
Well, I would definitely support, I think we heard a lot of very positive feedback from this auditing group, and they're less expensive, and it seems we, we agree that we definitely need to do, we need to tie up the.
Well, we've got some deadlines, I think that we have to do by the end of January, if I'm not mistaken, Ed, right?
We, we'll have to do the Schedule A by the end of January, correct.
Would they, would that be able to be accomplished?
By them? I don't know. I mean, by the time we get somebody on board.
What do you think, John?
Well, 200 hours, so I'm assuming they would just come in and go straight through, so it'd be five weeks, which in theory would be January if that's what they're going to commit to. But I think two things have to happen, one, first, we got to get the article passed.
Right, right.
Well, we have to assume we're going to hold the Special Town Meeting. We, and then get it passed to get the money. But I think in the meantime, so I don't think we can do anything, but I think in the meantime, we ask each one of them to provide three references of similar situations, or where they've provided this accounting service. And we do a little, we, we get our ducks lined up ahead of time, do the due diligence now while we're waiting for the town vote, and, and then.
It would have been off-topic from the presentation tonight, but Kinsherf does Hampshire Regional School District Finance Reports. It'll be good to get some feedback from them, just how satisfied they are.
I, you know, honestly, I'm not familiar with them, and, and in my experience, I mean, it's small, it's.
Wasn't it on Gen Day that a couple of people have spoken highly of?
They've been the auditor, or they've done this work for other towns, I've seen them listed, I forget which towns now, but you, you researched that.
Now, does this have to be bid?
I had it, it's, you know, a lot of, well, towns smaller and larger than us. I mean, they have, they cover quite, quite the geography in Massachusetts in terms of small towns, because we're, everyone is in this similar situation.
Does this have to be, well, for bid?
Yeah, it would be done under, they're both certi, certified accounting firms, so it would not have to be.
The vendor? Pardon?
So it would not have to be.
Okay. Well, I think we, we're not meeting again until the 21st, right?
Right, and, and, but John's point is true, in terms of whether we know that we've got the money, we're, we got a cart before the horse here.
Well, we can also prove it pending satisfactory references and funding.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we could, we could do something like that.
Is anybody opposed to just getting reference checks?
I'm not at all opposed to that, I'm also wondering if we want to approve it pending satisfactory references and funding.
That could be part of it, yeah.
Because I, I think this is going to have to be contracted, I mean, I just think the sooner the better.
Yeah, and given the holidays and whatever, it would allow anybody to plan about, you know, what their, what their January, February might look like.
I, I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but I'm assuming, well, again, I assume we're going to meet on the 14th at the Special Town Meeting. Could the Select Board just post a meeting immediately following that with the sole subject? In the event that it passes, we then take a vote that night to award it?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Stand away the 21st, does that make sense?
Yeah, that is, and then get references in the meantime, yeah. So long as it doesn't, you know, delay the, the start of anybody working in January. Is that possible?
We could, we could communicate to both people, here's our plan.
Well, basically, yeah. If you want to post, post a meeting for, before, you can just basically take a break and then reconvene after the town meeting.
Right. Call the Select, town meeting, call the Order, Select Board, call the Order, Select Board.
Yes, and then reconvene, that works.
In the meantime, you can check references, and then, and kind of let them know that our timetable is
Yep.
January, is that, was it, did Melanson say January 1 would work too?
I would imagine that probably, well, they might be getting back into the next audit season, so I'll, I'll, I'll reach out.
Okay.
And so the reason, while we would know Melanson from an audit perspective, we don't know them from this, this other department of theirs that would do this kind of cleanup work, right? So that's where we'd want the references, not from an audit perspective, since we know them in that regard. Okay, so if we can get three references from three, we got three references for each of them by our next meeting, that would be fine. Do we want to, so we won't do anything pending anything right now, we'll wait until we actually schedule it on the 14th, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, I'm comfortable with that, assuming everybody else is.
Yeah, alright, but at least we have two to choose from, so that's, that's a good sign. Now, one thought would be if they cannot start, anybody, whoever can't start until late, can we, do we have a Plan B to get the Schedule A done?
We should, and what I would probably recommend is we reach out to Vicki, who's currently doing the DLS submittals, and see if she can do that for us.
And that would be something.
Is there any conflict being, she's Chair of Finance?
No.
And just remind us what the Schedule A is again, for anybody listening?
It's a, I didn't really have to go back and take, take a look at it, it's a fairly detailed schedule that is required by the state, and I'd have to go back and take a look at the specifics that are on it.
Okay. Alright, any further comments?
Yeah, it just, I mean, it might be, it might be, might be worth our while once the recap sheet is done, for, for the town administrator to have a conversation with, with the individual doing that work, and our current town accountant, and everything, everything that I've heard, that, you know, that everything's running smoothly, they're working well together. And I think the, if there's any chance for that person to help more, do a little bit more work, at their existing rate is not what we were just quoted. So the more we could get done, the less we would pay for whoever this firm is that's coming in. You know, so if they're able to
Well, and it might be.
To march along.
A little bit of training too for our new accountant as well, at the same time, yeah. So, how about, given the way that, give, things are given, and Ed will end up seeing individuals before our next meeting maybe, would, would we have a motion along those lines? To empower Ed to have a discussion with the current individual doing the tax recap? To think about whether or not they would be interested and available to do the Schedule A for us, and submit it by the end of January?
Would that be helpful?
Sure.
I'll make a motion to authorize the town minister to negotiate on our behalf without committing to anything one way or the other of the previous topics, so to speak. And I report back five minutes before the Special Town Meeting.
And I'll second that.
You guys are serious? Okay, so, I mean, yeah, the idea would be to, to check it and see if the person is interested and/or available to be able to do that, because if we have a hard deadline for the end of January to submit the Schedule A, we need to be sure we've got that covered, we can't, can't just assume that one of these two entities are going to start and be able to get that done as our priority, so. Okay, all of that, I think we have a motion on the floor that's understood. Could I have a, a vote, please, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, so be it. Okay, East Street Bridge update, I think you gave us a little. Okay, East Street Bridge update, I think you gave us a little bit, if there's any more to say about that?
No, I think I covered it. Like I say, holy old gas and electric was out there today and yesterday, working with the bridge contractor to make sure that the contractor felt safe that that old gas line was abandoned, capped, and purged of all gas in it so that they could start the actual demolition work.
Okay, good.
All right, any traffic problems?
Not that I've heard so far.
Everybody detouring appropriately?
Good.
Good, okay. All right, new business. Should we, maybe suggest we just go a little bit out of order and jump right into the town warrant and this discussion about the meeting, and then come back to these other issues above that?
I'm fine with that.
Is it a... Given that we've got interested parties here, we have just a couple of informational things, but let's go right into the reviewing the 10th meeting warrant. But then, what we have before us now, Ed, correct me, this is the warrant with the summary and the motions right now?
Correct.
Okay, which? I think we have an extra one. Do you have this, anybody have, do you have two of them at all? I was going to give one to Robert, but maybe not, or I can show you. Does it have the motions, though?
I believe so.
Yes. Here's one that has the motions, Robert. Thanks. So, how would we like to proceed? Shall we go through the warrants and the motions here? Or do we want to start thinking about those options? Either postpone altogether, and I think we have to have a discussion about pros and cons of each of the two or three choices, right? Postpone the meeting until February-ish, February, early March? Hold the meeting as planned next week, but have fewer articles? And then go through and figure out what those articles were, would be, that are the highest priority to get done because of certain deadlines? And number three, hold it still probably, I assume, with a reduced, I don't know, still with a reduced number of articles, but in two separate rooms, if that's possible, up at Norris?
The reduced number of articles is going to be an issue, because this is what has been posted and is legal. So, I'll let Robert tell you about the rest of it.
Okay.
Hi, Robert Floyd, College Highway, speaking as town moderator. This is golden. It's set in stone. So, it's out of your hands as the select board. What can be done, we can't pare down arbitrarily now, here. You can discuss and say, when we get to the meeting, we'll motion to pass over. However, it's simply opening it up the balls in everyone's court. Anybody in the audience can stand up and say, I want to amend that motion. Let's vote on this. Let's talk about it. Let's discuss it. So, you know, you might get away with a couple, or maybe a lot, but the idea, I think, is to make things go smoothly, whatever happens, and not be set people up in a contentious atmosphere. We've had two rooms historically. We had 565 people. John Workman, block your ears. And they were in the other room. We had a TV. It was almost pre-cell phone, and I think it was walkie-talkie. I mean, it was crazy. It worked.
So, what in the cafeteria and what in the gymnasium?
It worked until they got to the article that they were interested in, and everybody poured in. Like the Reds say, they just came running into one group hug room. So, if anything goes wrong electronically in that second room, I believe everybody would just gang rush the main room. I heard, John, if I may, you said the high schools were, the rooms in the Norris School were better ventilated, but not the auditorium cafeteria.
The entire school.
The entire school.
And specifically, the gymnasium, cafeteria, the library, and the nurses' systems have their own independent systems.
Okay, I just wanted to double check.
Yeah, the whole thing's up to speed, the eye waves and the filters being switched.
The students have that room until 3 o'clock, because I've been there for years and years and years, setting up with East Hampton Media, and they're full boogie until 3:10 or so. So, is then that room going to be sanitized?
Yeah, my understanding is they were going to ask the fire department to come in, and whatever equipment that they have, you know about the equipment better than I do, Ed.
They would sanitize the room at that point, and then they would sanitize the room again after the special town meeting.
Okay, I didn't, you know, we provided information. But as far as the mechanics of the town meeting, I see the option, and, you know, I, as moderator, set the dates for the last three meetings with the support of the select board. It's prerogative of the moderator to believe that the meeting coming ahead will be safe or not safe. I'm not making any judgments tonight, but I do respect the Board of Health and their recommendation, and I would not stand and publicly go against that. So, we have the meeting. You can then decide which articles you want to pass over and let the town decide. That certainly works. Setting up two rooms, I can't even get up on the stage, because the stage is packed because of COVID, moving things around. I don't know if that second room is even vacant enough to have people. So, I'm not, I'm not a fan of two rooms right now.
Well, that would all, we won't know till the night, depending upon the number of people who attend. I mean, we may not need a second room.
Well, we would have to plan ahead and do a rehearse and set up the equipment and the cables. I mean, it's a whole magilla, but I agree with you. And for what it's worth, the vast majority of people I've come in touch with, which is quite a bit when it gets down to showtime, are coming.
Are not coming.
We spiked three, I mean, there's a lot of rumors, but we have spiked other towns, the state. They're not willing to. They played it safe so long. So, getting a quorum of 50 and maintaining it for the duration of the meeting is my concern. Because once people leave, there's no bar or restaurant we can run to and get them back. And 50, I mean, we...
Well, and having the bare minimum for a special town meeting is not ideal either.
And I imagine, I've seen from experience, that people come a lot for their own particular article. Once that, I mean, I've even said, I'm not to do that as a moderator. Hey, you might want to consider staying, because we need a quorum of 50, but they bolt. They go home.
And then we don't know whether or not we can get an extension on some of the items that really absolutely are drop dead date as of the end of this month. Is that right?
I talked to Melissa Cryin today, and she said the issue with the park grant would be that we can't sign a contract until we have the vote, and we have monies programmed to spend in fiscal year '22. It's all design funds. We could, on that one, actually go out and seek proposals or qualifications for a design firm before a February special town meeting, and have someone lined up so that if that passes, we're ready to go, and the design should be able to be finished by June, and we're fine. I also reached out to Eric Wise at PVC PC because of the canal question. And we're a part of either a five or six-town city group on that. And Eric said, you know, both he and Melissa were very understanding of the COVID numbers going up and the position we were in. And he said that he felt that the PVC PC, the PVPC does have some funds that they were going to kick into that pot that could cover Southampton's portion until we had a special town meeting and voted if, you know, if that was in February, and then, you know... Because I'm 99 and 9/10% sure that that particular article would pass at, you know, town meeting. So, for those two, we do seem to have some wiggle room.
What about all the balance issues?
All the what?
You know, like the police department, the balance issues, the transfer of, I mean, a lot of these are transfers.
They're transfers, you know, it would be great to do them now, but with the numbers rising, if we had to do them in February, they'll still be there in February to do them.
I mean, is it okay to do a negative balance on some of these line items?
Make a what?
To go to deficit spend?
It's, we're not supposed to. It's not ideal, but again, if we do it in February, at least it's four months before the end of the year, and, you know, hopefully, we would not get into that deficit spend at that point in time, whether it's with police or, you know, anyone else.
I'll make it work, whatever you decide. I haven't picked out my tie yet for Tuesday, but I'm ready.
What about in terms of the library accreditation? Does this have an impact if we delayed this?
If we put the money back in February, they should still get their accreditation back. The only difference, again, would be the fact that, okay, if it was approved in December, they'd probably be expanding their hours in January versus March.
Right, they were going to open up again on Mondays if this...
Right, so, you know, so they'd be, you know, it'd be two months behind. But again, it's not life and death.
And have they already put in the waiver for this?
They have already put in the waiver, yes. There was a deadline for that. I know Bradley put in his paperwork part of it. I put in, I had to submit some paperwork to them, to the person in the state to support that request for a waiver.
Why was February mentioned? I'm just curious, as opposed to January or...
What's that?
Why was February mentioned as a potential...
Just for time to get through COVID, get through the holidays?
The number's dropping back down, figuring that, okay, you've got this basically...
The post-holidays.
The holidays, exactly.
Just, I mean, no, no second, but I mean, yeah, it was more a post-holiday idea, I think, yeah.
Provided you do it before February vacation.
Because after February vacation's going to go back up again, and then we'll have April.
And those dates are when?
I can tell you one.
President's week, right?
My concern is that a number of students have already contacted, have been tested positive for COVID as short as last week, and somebody in a very safe town hall, I understand, has come down with COVID. So, this isn't, you know, just simply going into a building. This is going into a building where people with all the safety precautions have tested positive with COVID.
Just trying to look at some of the articles here.
That doesn't mean that that's where they got it.
Correct.
Right, correct, just to be clear.
Give you that, cheers.
Just looking at anything else that sounds like it's got a deadline-type parameter around it. The additional voting machine, we definitely need it for May.
Right.
Do we think if we postponed a town meeting, that we would be able to order it, given supply chains and whatever else, that we'd actually have a second voting machine here in time?
You can always borrow it from another town, right?
I would think so.
One of our Hampshire Regional communities, I would hope.
Won't they be having elections too?
On the same day.
The week of the 14th.
Okay, all right.
When is that?
I mean, I think there are options, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, okay, all right. I just want to see that we're, you know, that there are options for anything that sounds like it's got kind of a real deadline to it.
21st.
I think the park grant was the main reason why it was...
It was, it is.
February vacation's the week of the 21st.
So, John?
And I'm not clear about what you said about that.
The week of February vacation's the week of the 21st.
21st is a vacation week?
So, did you say that we do or don't risk losing $100,000 if the town votes to support the park grant? I mean, do we have room to not have, I mean, is that a, is that still a loss if we decide not to have the town meeting?
Well, if we still had it in February, we would still, with a positive vote, we'd still be eligible for the park grant.
Okay.
I think at most, we'd squeeze 90 days out of them, given the reality. I mean, I'm not sure that we're the only town that's in the same boat here that has received a park grant, but if that discussion with Melissa from the state program sounded like it was relatively positive, that as long as we could do it early on in calendar '22, because the first year of the grant is fiscal '22, which ends at the end of June. So, we've got to be able to do...
We've got to be able to do the design portion.
Design right then and there, and so your point about getting somebody and getting somebody ready to start pronto is really important. So, it doesn't sound like we would lose the grant at this point in time.
Well, I'd make a motion, then, to delay the special town meeting until the week before February vacation, then.
So, that means we will not be in a position to take any action on closing the 2020 books?
Closing the 21 books either.
Yeah. Unless you have in mind of another option.
Well, like I say, we could at least take care of the Schedule A with, hopefully, with the vendor that's doing the deal submission right now.
What would be the funding source?
I would continue to deficit spend the...
So, I can't support that?
Yeah, which is, but it's already deficit spent, so... Because we still have some funding available, additional funding available in the Assistant Town Accountant position.
Can I just be clear about something? Is the concern that this town, the special town meeting is going to be a super-spreader? Or that people won't be there? Because my concern, hearing from the Board of Health, is they're saying, let's postpone the special town meeting, where everyone's going to be masked and somewhat social distanced, but we're not going to impose a mask mandate on private businesses? Like, there are places in Southampton where people are not wearing masks indoors, and there are hundreds of people going through those doors that seem like much high-risk, more high-risk than a special town meeting. So, that's where they're asking us to postpone something that doesn't seem as high-risk as other things in town.
That's why I asked the question, frankly.
I would, I would agree with Joy. And I understand the Board of Health is looking at this from a unique angle than we are, and I respect that. But if they had taken the steps to say, okay, we're going to go as far as East Hampton, and we're going to institute mask mandate in town in all public spaces where you can't social distance, okay, we're beefing this up. You guys are seeing something that the rest of us aren't seeing, but you're just continuing what's already in place. And so, I say, I mean, speaking for myself, not the whole committee, but this committee makes up 10% of the required attendance. So, you know, I would suggest we move forward with it. If we end up not having quorum, then we don't have quorum, but I think there's too many... I'm not in favor of deficit spending period unless it's for snow removal. I understand that we can do it. I understand it's in the past, but I'm just not, I'm never going to support that individually, and I'm happy to be outvoted on those things. But it's on the books. We're moving forward, and I think at some point, we have to take control of our lives back and move forward. Now, if 50 folks don't show up, then we can't vote. Chris had a valid point. We don't want to meet the minimum threshold. You know, we want more than that, but...
I mean, we've got important things on the town meeting warrant. I mean, you know, having the bare minimum is not, you know, out of a town this size. If normally we have, I mean, even at Labree, we had at least 150 or thereabouts, right?
And we have a higher percentage of seniors than would be at any establishment at any time in Southampton. And the concept that we are the government putting on this event, I really want us to think about safety.
I would be in favor, I know it's going to be cold, but I would support moving it outside. I think we just, we have to have the meeting. If that means a week throwing up pup tents and using Arbor funds to continue the continuity of government and space heaters, but I think we need to move, so...
The deck of the church, it used to be opas opas in the back.
You can't fit 50 people on that thing.
And the other side of that is, does the select board support health and public safety?
Absolutely, so give me an alternative. Move it outside.
Postpone it, until the number drops.
That's your stance, and I respectfully disagree with that.
You can't move it outside at night. We'd have to reschedule the meeting.
You can't do it at night outside.
Do it at night outside.
You know, I think, I actually mentioned to the Board of Health Chair that I'd heard that people were going outside of Southampton to shop, because they were going to towns where there was a mask mandate. So, I let her know about that and encouraged her to bring it up at the meeting. So, I'm disappointed that the Board of Health did not implement a mask mandate when there, when we have so many people that have COVID in this town.
It was brought up at the meeting.
Right, but I'm not going to use that as a reason why to not support, you know, so I... Right, but I'm not going to use that as a reason why to not support, you know, so I, I do feel like we should listen to the Board of Health. They are our, you know, advisors when it comes to health matters. I certainly think that people won't come. The whole point of this is to get community input. So, I don't think people will come if there's been a huge spike in town, and I don't want to be responsible for a super spreader event either, right before the holidays. And if there is any way we can delay any of the funding things that have to happen and come up with a more creative plan, I'm all for it, even if it means doing things that we wouldn't normally do for the sake of public safety, which is exactly my point about some of these articles.
The gallery's having its 20th anniversary, it's not a plug, this Sunday, and it's our first reception since a year ago March. And masks are going to be required, and we're literally going to turn people away at the door because of geographic, you know, social distancing. And I'm not looking forward to it, but life is life.
Yeah. No, I mean, a lot of people are, no matter whether they're going into establishments in town, they're, they're choosing to wear their own masks, but it's not because it's been required.
I think this is also different than last year, because last year, I'm pretty sure my kid was still in hybrid schedule. Like, she was going to school only like two days a week around this time last year. It was reduced. I mean, now she's in school, that school, full time. Those teachers are in that school full time. And it's just, it just seems like too much mixed messaging from the leader, from the town, if we're saying, oh, we're going to postpone the town meeting, but all the kids and all the teachers should be in school, and the private entities don't have to have a mask mandate.
That is.
And I think the difference between now and a year ago is the vaccines available.
Exactly, yeah.
And I think those, those that want it, have gotten it, those that don't, I, I don't know that, how much more education is going to convince them to go and get it?
Well, there have been a lot, you know, speaking as someone who's giving vaccines right now, there have been a lot of people who have come in recently because they, because of the new variant, because of a lot of reasons. A lot of people only, it was only two weeks ago that this governor opened it up to everybody under the age of 65 for the booster. So, I think that a lot of people are getting vaccinated.
But isn't, isn't the latest results that came out from the COVID update said that the town of Southampton itself is at an 83% vaccination rate? I mean, how mu, how much?
Hundred.
But we're never going to get there, though. I agree with you. We should be at 100, but we're just never going to get there, and, and, you know.
I think we should, we should be higher than 83, I'll tell you that.
Yeah, but I, I think part of the issue, if, if, I think what I had heard too from, from earlier discussion, and is that our, our rate right now with this 50 or 51 cases in town is significantly more than what it was even just two weeks ago.
It's about tripled in the last two weeks.
Tripled.
Triple.
Well, it's true, because a family of five, where one individual gets it, the entire family is forced to quarantine with them, and then, of course, they're all going to get it. So, now there's five, so of course the numbers are going to go up. So, but you've got 50 people that did it, and there were only 10 families. And they all trace back to the same root source, but nobody wants to talk about that or go after that individual. Instead, let's suspend our entire life and just deficit spend and violate master general law and postpone. That being said, I agree, if, if the elderly population, if they feel vulnerable, they should not attend, and we shouldn't force it. But we have put ourselves into a situation where if we postpone the meeting, then we are willingly violating master general law.
Not if we come up with another plan that doesn't involve deficit spending, if it's possible. And don't forget, those 51 people have reached out or been in contact with a number of people. They don't go as a unit places.
Correct.
They have had contact with multiple people over the course of their contagious period.
But was that a result of a huge national holiday that everyone celebrated their families? Like, it wasn't a result of just doing, living their normal lives?
What do you mean?
Like, getting, contracting the disease, contracting COVID wasn't from going to special town meeting or going to Big Y or, or, we, I, we don't know. I'm assuming it's from Thanksgiving. I'm assuming that the influx of cases is from Thanksgiving, like.
Fair assumption, I would think.
That it's not just because people were just living their normal lives, it's because they were getting together and they were not as careful as they were supposed to.
Or people traveled, I mean, over the.
Yeah, and they traveled, or they traveled.
Possibly, yeah.
I, I just don't think, I'm not opposed to postponing it, I just think there has to be like consistency across the board with what we're doing. It's not, you know.
Well, and maybe, you know, maybe the Board of Health will decide in another week to meet again and have some updates too. I mean, they said that they weren't meeting until January, but that doesn't mean that they can't meet again if they need to.
Right.
Can, can I ask the police chief on his, on his opinion? I mean, your public safety. You're going to be at the.
Come on up, Ian.
I don't, I don't ever want to. If the, if the Board of Health makes a decision, I don't want to be contrary to the Board of Health, you know. I do believe in safeguards such as masks, and I do believe that they work. Obviously, that would be a safeguard in this, in this situation, that everyone would have to wear one. But as far as my personal opinions, I keep that personal.
Okay. Just asking on a professional basis.
And that was the order of priorities that I read to you. I mean, the first, they didn't say absolutely postpone the meeting. They said, if you can't, then let's do this. If you can't do this, then let, and, and when you do this, do this. In terms of, you know, getting two separate spaces to keep people further apart, keeping the agenda smaller so that we get through the meeting quicker, you know, and, and, you know, reduce some of the exposure. I mean, there were some contingencies.
Board of Health did not make a decision. We are not reacting to a decision. They said, here are three options in terms of our priority.
It was up to, it was really up to us.
Figure out what we're comfortable living with, so we're.
In their priority, one recommendation was to cancel the town meeting.
Right.
It's a postpone.
Postpone it, postpone it, yeah.
Yes.
Can we at least look at the articles again and determine if there's a way to postpone it without deficit spending?
I was just going to suggest that. So, if we look at the articles where we know that we have got to have money available for a particular thing, so I'm looking at, I guess it's number four and five, accounting expenses, let's see, from previous, so that's actually, accounting expenses, that would be something that is not, that's already happened. That's a, that's a cleanup thing, right?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so number five then would be the vendor to help with the tax recap, right? That payment there.
Yep.
So, number five is one. Employment advertising is water under the bridge already. Web maintenance was going to be a preventive thing. Voting machine, we hope we could get in time. Tree removal, if we met in February, it's still winter, that's when we'll have more trees. Ambulance debt, when is that due to be paid?
April, so we'd still have time for.
April.
February, March.
All right, and then the biggest one is Article 11, vendor for 21 financial book closure. That's really, that's really the one, really, because the recycling containers, we've already been told that we would probably have to pass that over because we can't fund that.
Right.
We can't do that.
We're going to have retained earnings.
That was going to be a, a definite passover, right? And then the ambulance staffing, dump truck, plow truck, and then the three CPC articles. What about the unpaid bills? That can wait.
It can wait.
So, the two that are in, in police department operating, the other ones that were internal transfers.
Can I ask you a question about that? Do all the towns, other towns require town meeting vote to transfer between line items of a department like police? Like, why doesn't the department head have the authority to move line items within a budget?
Depends on how the annual budget is voted, and we vote it by line item, so.
Vote it by department, really?
We, yeah, but it's done by line item. If it was done by subcategory or subtotal, then yes, the department head would have the authority to move those funds with, around within their own budget, but we don't do that.
Why don't we? Okay.
So, something we can think about for the future, maybe for the annual meeting. All right, so it looks like, if I'm understanding this, it looks to me like there are two articles that should we go ahead and have the meeting and try to do these things, we would be doing some deficit spending, and that's five and 11, right? And that total of those two is somewhere around close to $32,000 altogether, the two of those. Thirty-five at the most, thereabouts.
Any other mechanism for, or available funds for that you can think of it?
They'd all have to be voted on at this time of year.
Right, is there any other way of funding it without deficit spending so that it could wait till another time?
No, it would, it would all have to be through a town meeting at this point in time.
Was there any money left in that retirement contributory to cover the tax recap part, for example? I know we took some funds from there, but did we use it all?
I think there's a small amount left, like really small.
If we had the $1,500 left for the tax.
It's still a transfer, it still has to be voted on.
Yeah, it still needs to be transferred, right.
Yeah, I think that's our issue, is there, there may be money within the existing budget that we could.
Yeah.
Use. It's not, it's not new money, but it's, we're stuck with the whole movement of things without having a vote.
Yeah.
So, that would mean that.
Robert has something.
And I would just say, I mean, I'm also, one of my hesitancy is that, and, and the expenditure and revenue reports are improving every two weeks. They're, they're getting better, but you still don't have your, our ending, our ending numbers aren't there to show you your starting numbers, so.
Right, right. All right, eventually, we have to get a revenue report that actually predicts revenue instead of just records it.
It's an awful lot of faith.
Right.
To put on municipality.
Right.
No, it is, it is. Robert, thoughts?
Robert Floyd, College Highway, Article 14 requires bonding, and there was concern in early discussions today of everybody touching the box and handling that one box all the way down a road, down another road, down another road. The other alternative, that article being, to be considered, is people lining up with their little ballots sticking in in a slot six feet apart. That's what other towns do anyway.
Yeah, it's a good alternative.
Okay.
Or putting it in this annual town meeting when it goes up against other capital expenses.
Right, yeah. Well, that's it. I mean, even if, you know, suppose we postpone and we did a February special town meeting, I would still say then we would probably have half of this amount, or some reduced amount of that on a February warrant, and the rest carry on to our annual town meeting in May. I mean, that would be my assumption, that we would, we wouldn't have as many on here as we do now perhaps, but. So, the transfer to the vendor, so number five, that was the 1560 and the tax recap. Now, we're, we're able to pay the work that's just been done, or this is partly covering that?
We will pay it because we owe that.
And, and it, can it come out of accounting wages or somewhere? I mean, or is that?
It'll get paid out of accounting expenses.
Yeah. And would that put us in a deficit situation?
It's already in a deficit.
It already is.
Yeah.
So, there we are, John.
Oh, I know, no, I know, I mean.
Are we able to reach out to DOR?
To do what, for what?
Get a waiver on any, you know, deficit spending, or is it like against the law?
We can't use ARA money for this.
You're not, it's against the law. It's, you're not supposed to do it.
Yeah.
Arpa money.
Yeah. So, any work that would be done for the Schedule A, how would we pay for that?
It's the same thing, it would come out of accounting expenses.
Okay, so the, the real one that would be held up completely would be the big ticket number of closing out the, the 21 books.
Correct.
The 20. Isn't it the 2020?
21.
21.
21, 21 books.
Yeah.
Which, until that's done, we won't have starting figures for this year.
We don't have an accurate picture on 22.
Right.
Right, so that was the impetus for trying to keep it moving forward so that we don't wait, recognizing the.
You don't have figures for what, John?
The issue, the beginning figures, rolling over to begin revolving funds, whatever else.
Right, you have to have, someone's got to certify your ending numbers to start the beginning numbers on these reports.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I mean, on revenue, it's, I mean, all you have to do is look at the tax percentage. I mean, it's, it's where it's supposed to be.
Yeah, but there's other, you know, there's many of, I mean, from various committees, commissions have got revolving funds, and they have no idea where they ended up last year to start this year. And so, that's been one of the confusion and questions. I mean, if, if we.
So, if we, if we were just to focus on five, was it five and 11, whatever those two are, do we have to, and we say we want to pass on every single other one, do, do we have to take a vote on everyone? We couldn't, we couldn't do an initial. We, we want to do one lump sum vote, recognizing, in the interest of public safety and expedite everyone's departure here, we only are asking you to vote on two questions, so we want to propose a question that we bypass all the others except for five and 11 or whatever the two numbers are.
Well, if you're going to do that, you may as well. I mean, that gets into the problem.
Yeah, but if, if.
There's a concept, sorry, there's a concept about, I've got the name of it, I mentioned here in a meeting or two before, an agenda where you have five items, five articles, and we're going to lump them together, and consent agenda, consent agenda. We don't do that because we have time for the meeting, we only meet two or three times a year, and we just don't use it. Other towns do. I don't know if it's the reverse, whether we can do that passing over. That's something you would have to check with Copman and Page K and A and see what they were thought. I've never seen that done before or heard it done before.
But your earlier point was, even if we, one by one by one, say, pass over, anybody in the audience can stand up and say, uh-uh.
Well, that's what, that's why I was trying to get a motion that says, we're, of the 23 articles, we're going to, we're, one vote to pass over 21 of them. So, it's a third, it's a.
There aren't that many, first of all.
However, however many there are.
Don't scare everyone watching.
Then somebody can object to it and try to amend it, and then it, it, it can get chaotic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But if everybody there wants to expedite and get out because they don't want to be there, there'll be less pushback.
I don't know of a way. I'm pretty astute in finding what other towns are doing through the gavel line, it's called, what moderators have no time or, you know, too much time. They get on the chat line, and I do read it a period, you know, daily almost, and I haven't come across that.
But that's an interesting suggestion.
So, if, if we postpone this until February, we can't enter into an arrangement with one of these CPA firms.
Until Feb, until that time.
Until we technically have the money in hand. I mean, we, we think we do, we know we do in a way, but we don't have it approved, right?
Right.
So, that completely stops us from even letting them start work, even though they wouldn't probably be billing us until.
Correct.
End of February, right?
And if we were to pass over each one, it wouldn't take too long, you know, it's.
But I mean, what's, well, I mean.
If we had to do it one by one.
Yeah.
It wouldn't take, you know, an ordinary amount of time.
Would you be, would you be opposed, is it possible, and if so, would you be opposed?
No, under the circumstances.
No, 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 somebody making a motion, what are the two article numbers?
Five and 11.
Five and 11. If, if, as soon as we start, we make a motion to go out of order and take number five first and then number 11. So, we at least get those two out of the way.
The, the town votes yea or nay on that. In fact, I do call it every meeting. Is there a reason to take, in fact, we have it in the, in our bylaws where the moderator cannot make that decision, which the moderator can do in other towns.
Yep.
So, that would be a vote, yeah.
At least move those two right to the beginning.
Yeah.
And, and then, you know, get the vote and get, potentially, if, we could get this down to a six month, six minute thing, in and out in six minutes.
Okay. Can I ask a question? I know you said that people will come and they'll vote the items that they're interested in, and they leave. Now, if we go below 50 at any point before we finish going through all of these passovers, does that negate the entire meeting?
No.
Okay.
We can go below 50 until somebody points a, a called order, point of order. So, if we vote all in favor, I oppose, nay, the ayes have it, passes my majority, we could have 45 people.
Okay.
And we could go through all the articles until we do a count, and then the count is 30, 18, 48 votes, and then somebody says, okay, look, it's, we don't have a quorum. The vote counts for that article, but we can't continue.
Okay.
So, everything previously voted would count.
Right.
Okay.
Then we have to postpone to a time certain, or if there isn't enough business worthwhile, simply dissolve the meeting.
No, that's another way. Yeah.
At least try and get the two items out of the way.
Get the two, yes, the two top ones.
Okay.
Can I ask an unrelated question or a somewhat related?
The whole thing was for the whole park grant in the first place, guys. I mean, I would want to do the CPC ones too, myself, but anyway.
Chris, I'm open to that if everybody else.
That's where the problem is, is that we, you know, once you start picking and choosing and cherry picking here, it's like, well, why not this one and why not that one?
Right, exactly.
Yeah, that's, that's.
You've opened up the can of worms at that point in time.
I mean, the only, the only rationale for five and eleven is the deficit spending.
Right.
That is, that is the only rationale for that, right? So, yeah, I'm reading, sorry.
The people that are working at town meeting, they're election workers, right?
Yes.
Did we ever approve their PCF? I don't think we got, they came, Lucy sent it back to us.
No.
Is that a problem?
They'll just be paid at the old rate?
That's a problem, then.
All right, guys, I'm a little stumped myself. What's anybody thinking here? We don't have, we have to make a decision tonight, pretty much.
My two cents is, once we're in the room, once, if we do go with the town meeting Tuesday, then my point is, let's, let's just get through as many articles as we can. You know, the damage is done. We're here. Let's do it.
And understanding that, though, I would like to prioritize five, eleven, and then because it always seems to work this way, the CPA, CPC stuff always falls to the end.
CPA could come in, exactly.
Bring that up, because it is a December thirty-first deadline, so if we can get that out in the third vote, and then fall back, or, you know, fall back to maybe third, four, or five, just take them all as.
Go down, go down in order after that.
I will split the vote for that last one on the parks commission.
I'd just like to point out a little bit of lack of logic, frankly. I don't support it. I think we should put it off. I think we're in the middle between Christmas and Thanksgiving and New Year's, and I just feel like it's irresponsible. But you said the damage is already done. You said, let's get on with life. We've heard about the difference in opinion about the Board of Health addressing things. It's irrelevant. Their recommendation is to postpone it, the number one recommendation, so I can't support. I can't support it. That's where I am.
And when you say you want to split the vote, I mean, what, not take fifteen, sixteen, seventeen as a package, but?
Oh, whatever is fifteen, fifteen, A, deal with A separately, B separately, C separately.
We usually do for.
Divide the question, like we do with the budget.
We usually do for CPC.
We vote for A, discuss and vote for A, that's out of the way. Vote, discuss, discuss and vote B, that's out of the way, and then C. We don't have to vote for all three because we voted for each one individually.
Right, but in this case, we made three separate articles.
Right, there's three.
Three, yeah. Well, I, I'm dividing the question into three separate articles. That's the moderator's prerogative, and I believe it's confusing the way it is.
So, you've already divided it? Because the way it's in the final version is three separate articles.
No, I'm talking about the last one, the park one, where it's a separate article.
Yeah.
I intend to divide that.
Where? What do you mean divide it? How?
A, B, and C.
Which is? Fifteen is the canal, sixteen.
No, I threw the number out of my top of my head.
Oh.
Sorry, the parks commission one.
Yeah, okay.
That has an A component, a B component, and a C component.
Oh, yeah, just for the town to accept Conant Park as.
So, we're going to vote, we're going to discuss and vote A, and then we're going to discuss and vote B.
Okay. The park commission to accept the park as a park.
If it doesn't go as an entirety, it doesn't count.
Yeah.
It's a no vote.
All three, but for discussion and voting, all three have to pass anyway.
Yeah, but if you.
Yeah, but if one of those doesn't pass, the article doesn't pass.
That's my intention. We'll discuss this tomorrow.
A, B, C, yeah.
I mean, that's why we had to go through state to get the language approved.
Okay.
We had to have this approved by the state.
We didn't make up this language on that one, believe me. That was the state's required language.
Break it apart, and then it's not approved.
Okay.
That's, that's too risky.
Teamwork.
All right. Okay, so.
Wow.
Wow. Okay, I think we need a motion on the table, and let's see.
Point of word, we only need a motion if we're going to alter the course, because the meeting's already approved, so if, to Maureen's point, if, if, if we're going to, the motion, the only motion to make would be to postpone the meeting.
Correct, yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion to postpone the meeting until a date in February, before school vacation.
Okay. Do you have a second? Anybody?
Yeah.
Well, I'll second it, just for point of discussion. Getting it on there. All right. No more discussion? All right. Shall we have a vote, then? Motion's on the table to postpone it until February. All those in favor?
Aye.
I think I'm going to go aye. All those opposed?
No.
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 Okay, the vote is three no, two aye. The motion fails, right? And the meeting is still scheduled for the fourteenth. Okay. All right. With that, do we need to go through the summary and the motion language tonight? What do we need to do with this?
It's just there for, if, you know, I will post it tomorrow. If you see any, you know, dispellings or anything, shoot them to me by tomorrow morning, and I'll change them.
There was one I had sent you about, a motion. Did you catch that one?
Yes.
You changed that one? Okay.
Yeah, I changed all those capitalizations.
But there was one that had a motion in the wrong one?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, so with that.
So, could I just understand the process, and, and, because I am in favor of moving five, eleven, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen to the front? What exactly do we have to do? I'm guessing there has to be a motion made. I'm not sure, and if it has to be in writing in a duplicate form.
For, to make that motion at town meeting, to start out of order and start with articles five, eleven, whatever?
By tradition, the select board reads the articles, the motion under the articles. Anybody in the audience. In fact, one year, all the select board refused to read a particular motion, and somebody in the audience stood up and read it.
So, when we go to read the first motion, if we say you want it out of order.
So, that's your motion to pass over. Your, your motion is not the one that's typed out. It's the one that you'll say, I motioned to pass over article such and such.
But I thought you mentioned that we could put up a motion to say we would like to go out of order.
Right.
Oh, for that one, yeah.
Article five.
You don't need that in writing. No, because I asked the town meeting if there's anybody that sees a need to rearrange the order, and that's when you would stand up and say, Ms. Moderator, I motioned to move article five and eleven up front first.
Okay.
Okay.
Fifteen, sixteen, seventeen.
The, the writing comes in amendments.
Okay.
Because we have to vote on it, and the town clerk has to put it in the minutes.
Okay.
So, we need that in writing.
So, those five, eleven, whatever, fifteen, sixteen, whatever they are.
Seventeen, yeah.
And then go back to the normal order, to the extent we can do that, to the extent we have a quorum.
And anytime you just simply say, I want to do this, help me. And I'll give you hints for the procedure, and we'll.
Well, you like to yell at people.
Can we revoke?
Okay, are we ready? Are we done with that subject?
And then, one other question. Traditionally.
I said, can we revoke?
Well, except for our outside meetings for COVID, the select board has alternated reading the motions. There will be one microphone on the table, so does the select board want to alternate, or designate one person to read the motions?
I think one person should read.
Yeah.
I think one person should read.
Probably one person, I would say, as well. Going to draw straws on that one, guys? Heard of the chair. Sure, the chair can give it a whirl.
I'll stand by with a bottle of water.
I'm getting better. I'm bringing my water. I might need a big container for town meeting. Yeah, no, let's do that, not, not alter. Alternate, yep. Okay, next agenda item. Let's go back, back up to this, what we had under the, the first article, under the, first item under the new business. Initial discussion, land for town purchase consideration, two seventeen, College Highway. And just to note, this is property literally kind of diagonally across from town hall here. It's a house and lot, about one point three acres, I believe, that's for sale. The Realtor contacted the town, contacted me, saying, would the town be interested in this? Said we hadn't even had a thought about it yet, and we could begin having a discussion about it. I did pass it on to Housing and Open Space just for their information as well. The one thing about the property is that it certainly backs up onto the current police station, old town hall, parking lot area. The land goes back quite a ways, I understand, and it's next door to a small parcel that we currently do own as the town. So, there was some question from the Realtor if the town might be interested in expanding that section. So, I don't have any much more information than that, frankly, to even really start much of a discussion, but I wanted to at least put it on the table and let you know that that's something that's out there as we look at properties. Yes, John?
So, I just, I have some comments on it, and I don't know what the appropriate vessel or committee is to explore this, but just some facts. So, two seventeen, College Highway does consist of one point three acres. The town already owns two fifteen, College Highway, which is point two nine acres, and the town owns, as we know, eight East Street, which is point eight five acres for cumulative, all-inclusive, two point three four acres. Two ten, College Highway currently sits on seven and a half acres, of which I have to assume that more than half of it is taken up by town hall and the empty fields in the back. So, if I was to isolate the fire station here, I believe two point three four acres, all-inclusive, is certainly attractive if I think about the addition to town hall that was done, the old town hall on eight East Street. You know, even though, you know, the parking, the garage looks wonderful, taking that off, acquiring that property of two seventeen, at whatever to be negotiated, acquiring the property, demoing the property, making adjustments to the town hall addition has got to be less than a million dollars, which, based on the study that Mr. Knickke provided to us previously, was just the starting price for excavation up here for ledge, which does not exist across the street, that if we could acquire the property and demo the property for under a half a million dollars, in theory, under the old proposal, that leaves us another half a million dollars to help restore the existing town hall as part of one bigger package. I have no idea what to do with the remaining fire station once we move, but it also negates the five mile driving radius because it's right across the street, so in theory, it would fall in the same thing. So, I definitely think it should be explored.
Okay. The only, I had seen an asking price on it, and I think it's possibly changed now. The asking price, I think, was around three hundred and sixty thousand for it, if I'm not mistaken.
Sounds right.
But I think there was some, as with many of the properties, I think along College Highway, septic is oftentimes an issue, and I was told anyway that the owners were probably going to have to do some septic improvement, you know, as part of the, the sale. So, just for whatever that's worth, and I have no idea.
But potentially reduce the cost of the purchase, yeah.
I mean, so, I don't know. And from looking at, I just looked at the assessor's map, and it looks like, even though you see the, excuse me, the, the house right here on College Highway, the lot itself, the way I saw it anyways, looks like it extends right down, kind of parallel, to the parking lot and almost ends right around the, the back of the town, the old town hall police station. So, it's kind of a lengthy lot in that regard. I mean, it's a little bit deceiving when you look at it from the front, but. Anyway, and I don't know that there's any, what more we can really do about it, but I mean, yeah, I just want to do, at least bring it out there and see, you know, how could we start exploring it? I don't know. We'd have to get, well, I mean, there's grant money out there to buy land. Actually, one of those is coming up in January, heaven forbid. But, you know, borrowing and et cetera, et cetera. I mean, there's all the options there, but I don't know how quickly the, the property's moving. I, you know, so many properties are on the market for a short time, and then they're gone, but this one seems to have been around for a couple of weeks already.
And I know with this, ultimately, it's the Board of Select, it's the select board's, sorry, select board's decision to, to vote, right, to acquire property or anything like that. It's kind of one of these times where I wish the, the Public Safety Committee was farther along than where it is. But, I mean, this, this, in theory, I mean, based on the fact that West Springfield is spending six million dollars on a, on a park for a school, out of their ARPA funds, for us to enhance public safety and the quality of life to the citizens, you know, there's got to be an argument there that, that probably, assuming that we're still on the select board when the IRS comes knocking, we might be able to defend it. I just, to your point, I think it's a unique opportunity, and I'm not sure who the person to explore it is.
Exactly.
Or what committee it might be.
And like I say, like, I had just passed the information off to both Housing and Open Space as two that I thought might be interested in it for their own purposes, too. So, I don't know. And do you have some guidance and thoughts about what we should think about, or how would we try to pursue something? I mean, just to at least contact the Realtor and say, there is a level of interest. We're not sure what we're, what we can do, but.
Yeah, I, I would suggest that.
Yeah.
You know, let me know the contact. I'll be happy to reach out.
Okay.
Maybe Darcy Gasparini, who's Taylor, who's representing the.
It's Taylor, yeah, Taylor Agency.
I agree with John. I would support looking into it. It's egress from two major roads in town. It may not be a big enough lot for both, but it might be big enough to improve, to have it separate. I mean, there's a lot of options, and I think we should explore it, for sure.
Okay. So, we'll get you the contact of that, and you can reach out and just find out. Maybe the price has changed a little bit, too, but we'll see where that goes. All right. So, the, the second item right here is the Hendrick land donation, and this was just informational. And I'm, oh, I'm gonna, I don't remember if I forwarded that email in. I think I did, but I've got to pull that up.
We got it all.
Yeah.
Did you all get it? Okay.
Yes.
So, basically, this is the property at the corner of Cold Spring and Rattle Hill. Is that right? That Ted Hendrick and family were working on donating to the town, and they've been working for the last two years, pretty much, I think, with various assistance from, I think, Kestrel and various others to go through the state tax program to try and get a conservation restriction and all those kinds of things done, and do a donation to the town on this. And from what we've understood, the, the, the situation has come to its conclusion, and that has, that has been, been done. And I think the next step, I'm assuming we've already accepted this land at a town meeting vote
Right.
over a year ago, so this is really just informational. I guess we were not sure that, or I was not sure who might hold the conservation restriction on this.
And I emailed Paul, and there isn't a, according to her, there's no conservation restriction on this.
Uh-huh, okay.
Yeah, so, it'll just be working out the, the deed between their attorney and our town council.
Okay, okay. And would this fall as something managed, though, by CONCON, or? How does, who?
Unless it goes to, you know, with the restriction and the deed, that it be managed by conservation, I would say it goes to the inhabitants of the town of West Springfield.
Inhabitants of the town, yeah. Okay, okay. Well, anyway, just to say that. Yeah, I'm not sure. The Hendricks have gone through a long process. We appreciate their, their determination and commitment to doing this, and it's, it's a very nice corner of property that will, pretty, pretty close to the area of Clearwater Woodland in that general area, not contiguous, but in that general neighborhood. So, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the number of acres on that, but thanks very much to the Hendrick family for making this happen. And like I said, we had already voted at town meeting to accept this donation of land. So, that will add to our open space inventory, most likely. Okay. Next one up, I think, is the, the draft of a, a new bylaw on naming rights. And Francine, I'm going to turn that over to you. You guys have got it in your.
No, this is, this is a replacement to what's in your packet.
Okay.
Everybody take one, pass it down. There's only been one, I mean, we agreed at the last meeting to be more specific by inserting the word structures, that it was not limited to buildings and public lands. It was building structures and public lands, so that changed. And then the other change that was not on the, on the version you had in your packet is on page, on the second page, section two.
Thanks.
Where it says, the, you know, proposed names or designations will be submitted to the select board, and we didn't specify, but we are now, that they will be done in writing, and that the proposal must include a justification for the name. and that the proposal must include a justification for the name requisite, recognition that's being requested. And that's the only change. Everything else remains the same, so that we can, if you're okay with these.
Did you get my email that, uh, I offered suggestions? I sent it to, um, the chair and Ed. I actually edited and, uh, made some suggestions.
Have you seen that?
No.
No?
I mean, I can.
Do you remember offhand what they were?
Yeah, I mean, I can go through them pretty quickly if you want.
Sure.
I have it right here.
Why don't we?
Okay.
First of all, bylaw, the second word is, should be hyphenated like the rest of the document.
Mm-hmm. Where are you? Right up at the second word, this bylaw.
Right.
Section one.
Section one. The rest of the document uses the hyphenated bylaw. No, doesn't it? I, I, I pretty much, I think I saw that.
We, we agreed.
It's got it in both places, so you're just talking about it being consistent.
Okay, it's gonna be consistent eliminate, yes, okay.
Okay, one of the other really. And then where it says "five public lands," it says "bridges," I mean, I added "bridges" because that's what drove this a little bit. But do you think "structures," is that, is that what, the hope is that that would?
Well, that was the intent of using the word "structure."
Okay.
Was, you know, "bridges," "a structure," I just assumed that that would just go.
Okay, 'cause you do actually say playgrounds, parks, courts, athletic fields, intersections, medians. But you don't mention bridges, and a lot of bridges are named after veterans. So, I didn't know if it would be worth actually saying "bridges."
We'll put it in.
Or it could be in the definition under D, could say "public building structure," any structure.
Other than this.
Yeah, I don't know, but yeah.
I just wanted to see if you wanted to be explicit about adding bridges.
Yes, okay, very good point.
Okay. I did have, uh, a few suggestions under number two, uh, on the second page. Um, where the sentence ends, "Any proposed name or designation of any public building or public land shall be submitted to the select board for its review and recommendation as to the appropriateness thereof."
Mm-hmm.
Um, it says "the justification may include just, the proposal may, must include justification for the naming recognition." I just wrote, "The select board may establish standards and criteria for consideration of proposed names and designations following a duly advertised public hearing and with a letter of support, uh, from the Southampton Historical Commission, the select board shall forward its recommendations to a special and/or annual town meeting." So, I'm assuming, are we going to, I mean, if we're going to be setting this up, isn't there going to be some criteria? So, I just inserted, "The select board may establish standards and criteria for consideration of proposed names and designations."
Mm-hmm.
Well, I think if we're going to establish criteria, it needs to be part of this bylaw, rather than it, it.
Yeah, yeah.
It would appear arbitrary to do it after the fact and whenever somebody.
Right.
So, it either is, I know you're using the word "may," but you may do it sometimes and may not do it other times. I'm just looking for consistency.
No, but you, you're establishing the criteria, you're doing that once.
Right.
But, I mean, the criteria.
Yeah, that makes sense. I mean, if the, I mean, the whole point of this is that there's some guidance.
The criteria to be followed.
But the sentence right now says, "The proposal must include justification for the naming recognition."
Right.
But I'm hoping that that's standardized.
All right, so based on.
Yeah, I think there should be some kind of criteria.
On the following criteria, and then we're gonna have to list it out.
And then it says, "Following a duly advertised public hearing and with the advice of the Southampton Historical Commission." I think it should be more formalized. I think it should be with a letter of support from the Southampton Historical Commission.
Okay, and with.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Why the reference to the Southampton Historical Commission? You, you haven't said in pertaining to historical structures or buildings, so why would you ask for a ruling from the Historical Commission if you're naming a brand-new building or structure that it isn't, isn't historical?
You're right.
Yeah, that's a good point.
You're right.
So, if it does pertain to an historical.
Yeah, and so Southampton Historical Commission, if applicable.
Yeah, something along those lines, right?
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
You need a committee to do this stuff.
Good point.
And, and just on number, number two there,
Yes.
Any possibility of eliminating special, so that it has to be at an annual town meeting when we know we have large attendance?
Okay.
That's all.
Sure, that's fine. Okay. Okay, anything else, Randy?
I would prefer it be a hearing as opposed to a meeting. So, like, under D, where it says "a duly advertised public," my preference would be that it would be
Meeting?
A, a hearing, because that requires it to be
Posted.
Publicized and formalized.
So, you would prefer meeting?
Hearing.
Hearing. So, that it was advertised in the newspaper and all that stuff?
I think it's, I think it's very important. I think there's a lot of problems when it comes to naming things, and I think the more we formalize it and standardize it, the better.
Thank you, okay.
Yeah, and that comes up again on, on, um, under, under number five.
Okay.
It says "public hearing slash, public meeting slash hearing."
Right.
Gave us an option, but, okay.
Yep, okay.
All right, so we're taking meeting out in all of those instances.
Yep.
We have to work on establishing some criteria, which I think to some, well, we'll have to do it, okay.
I think this pro, this bylaw so far addresses the process, but it doesn't necessarily address the criteria.
Okay.
I have a question. There's, there's one, and number three is kind of a criteria, but, yeah.
Right? Does this apply to lands that are donated?
Yeah, right.
Well, lands that are donated, oftentimes, people would name them themselves before they get donated, I think, but I don't know that.
It, sometimes that's the condition of.
Yes, that's the condition of the donation, so I just want to make sure.
Yep.
I mean.
It's valid to ask, you know, we might mention that, yeah.
Yeah.
Donated land.
Are exempt from this?
And I thought, I thought, didn't we exclude from this anything that fell under the school committee?
Yep.
Maybe I'm just missing it.
I think that that was one of the issues that came up, because there was a naming that happened by the park department. And the question is, who decides? Is it their own sort of, I mean, does school get to decide for the schools? Does the park get to decide for the park, if they want to name a field or?
Well, it, under number four, it, it, it does list the
The naming.
The ability to do that, but only for portions of.
Yeah, by the department or agency having jurisdiction over the same.
Yes.
Um, so, naming an, or designation of individual rooms, areas, or sub-areas within a building structure.
Right.
Okay.
Um.
And then it has to constitute less than 20%, 25% of the public building space.
Okay, that, that, I think that's clear.
Some of that, I think, maybe, is some of the criteria, maybe, that just has to be re-
Yeah.
Repackaged in terms of how that presents, yeah?
And I think, you know, having a complimentary sort of handout or something that, with a checkbox.
Yep.
That kind of helps to standardize it would help.
Yep, okay. All right, good, so, bylaws committee, back to, back to the drawing board.
Well, I think it's a good one, you got it from another town initially, right?
Yeah, I think so, yeah, we, this is borrowed from another town, part of it, anyway.
Yes, we'll bring it, we'll bring it back.
Yep. All right, moving on. We're, are we in our agenda here, sorry?
COVID-19.
COVID-19 update, um, what more can we, can I say? We think we've.
We've covered this.
I think we've
Covered that?
Covered it, yes, our numbers are rising, we're up to fif- 50 positives here in Southampton, so. And that's kind of indicative of the statewide numbers and our surrounding community numbers also.
Right. Okay. All right, CARES Act update. I think the one thing I think I'm questioning is, just from what we heard from the school, if they're not clear on what they were able to spend. I think the last meeting, we had finally heard back from the state that they were okay.
I thought I had sent that to Bobby, but I'll double check.
I wasn't going to get in, into it there, but, you know, I've been copying on all those emails, and there is, there, there's no gray line between what Ed is communicating on our behalf. I, I, I don't understand how his emails could be interpreted any other way, with the sole exception of the $6,000 as it relates to the housing.
Housing.
But he was very clear, everything else is good, and you should utilize this first money to close last year's books.
Yep.
So.
And that included making the nursing staff whole as well.
Yes, so unless that email somehow maybe just fell in the inbox and, and it wasn't seen.
I'll, I'll send another one.
Just resend it and send it to, copy two or three more people on it, maybe. Somebody will see it.
Copy the super.
Yeah, copy the super.
Lately, Bobby and I have been sending back and forth so frequently that, yeah, it could have been just.
Okay. Excuse me, okay, um, where are we here?
Revenue expenses.
Okay, revenue and expenses update, and we have, let's see what we have here now. So, we have revenues through October 31st, is that correct? And expense, expeds through 12/2. So, we are catching up a bit.
Yes.
More and more revenues are getting posted in here, which is good. Does anybody have any thoughts and comments on what you have in front of you here? I think what we have, actually, the, the most recent thing, though, well, yeah, my copies copied every other page, but that's okay, I, I saw it online, it's, it's fine.
Remind us about the gas and plumbing. All right, that's over.
The what?
Gas and plumbing.
On the revenues?
On the expenses. It's 101.78%.
Oh, I did see that, that they've over expended a little bit, so they're done for the year.
Which one is that, sorry?
Uh, gas and plumbing.
Under the, uh.
Gas and plumbing expenses.
Building inspector, yeah. And just as, as we're doing, I know with FY '21, you know, we've had that, that whole issue with our cow power and all that kind of stuff, are we able to avoid that situation this year of having to reconcile all that? As the bills and credits come in, are we able to do it simultaneous this year so that we don't have to have that big activity on reconciling all our cow power accounts? For FY '22, are we able to do that kind of simultaneously with?
Just starting to do that, yes, so.
So, that would be one thing that hopefully would be less onerous than it has been for us, okay? There was one other thing we had last meeting that, remember, we saw a big, something that was like $3,600 that should have been, there was an extra zero in there, and I can't remember what it was. But, yeah, anyway, if I find it, I'll mention it to you. So, at this point, it looks like, and this is through the end, essentially, the end of November, the expenses for the general fund, total expenses are And revenues for the general fund through the end of October, so it's a month, month off, are $8,541.959, sorry, 800, yeah, $8,541,959.49. So, with a month behind in revenue, we are
Well, that sounds about right, don't worry.
About 400 more, a positive, right, on.
We're on revenue than we are on expenses.
We're more on revenue than we are on expenses, so that's a, a good sign, and we're a month behind in the revenue. Yeah, so, I mean, we're, that's, we're not quite as far out in the woods as we were before.
Figure out.
Yep.
Ed, is that $17,000 under the park gift fund, is that the pickleball?
No.
On what?
Revenue, park expense, gift fund, 17,000, is that the pickleball donations?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Uh-huh, okay, yes. All right. Good. Did anybody else have any questions on either the revenue or the expense report?
No.
No.
And I take it some of the things under the capital funds, some of the things at Norris that had been approved at um, previous town meeting, those have not happened yet. Some of the masonry repairs, the doors, the blinds, all of that are things that they're still
Correct, they, they had done the blinds, they were reaching out to process that invoice today.
Uh-huh, okay. Great, okay. Anything, anybody?
This is a little bit of the previous agenda item, but are we all on track with the CARES Act? Everything's going to be spent by the end of the month?
Should be, yes.
Okay. All right, if there's no more questions on that, let's keep on moving. Cost efficiencies, alternative committee discussions and appointments. Okay, we've done the appointments, we are now eight people out of possible 12. Um, I would like to recommend that we get moving on this, and I don't know, um, just to have an initial launch meeting, um, before the end of December, if we could, and I guess I don't know what's going to be more appropriate for people.
Do you, um,
Yeah.
Do you want me to temporarily act as the clerk until we organize? And then, um, set up like a survey monkey, send it out to the group with a bunch of dates and.
Yeah, or a doodle, doodle pole or something like that, yeah.
Share that with you.
Sure.
You can make the selection.
That would be great, because my concern is whether we, I would, I think we could do a Zoom meeting rather than in-person meeting. Um, but whether we did it in the afternoon or an evening is kind of hit or miss. I'd originally thought afternoon, but that may not accommodate everybody, so, uh, yeah, if you would not mind doing that, setting up a little.
We'll get that done by the end of the week and then share it with you by the weekend.
That'd be great, and we can choose a couple of options and see what kind of dates we have on that. That way, we could get an initial launch meeting going, that would be perfect. And we're still more than willing to take anybody who's interested from the public. We, we still have our open slots for anybody who's got financial management and/or HR background. We are really looking for your input and your, uh, perspective and expertise, so, please, reach out to Ed if you have any interest in that. Okay, um, next one is the ARPA survey update. I actually am getting very close here, um, I just want to point out the couple of things that changed from the last meeting. Um, question one and two are the same, three is the same.
Could I, um, could I actually, um, ask a question about those?
Yes.
Um, right now, it says, I don't know if I have the most recent survey, actually, let me just see. You said one and two are about the same, meaning about their ages or demographics?
The questions didn't change, you should have version three.
And that's in the packet, right? Okay, I have a lot of versions of this.
I put, in the footer, you've got a version three, 12/5.
Okay.
That's the one we're looking at, so the questions, number one and two are the same. Questions three and four, uh, have not changed, five have not changed.
Can I just ask a question about, um, in what areas should we invest our ARPA money? Is that question three, because these aren't numbered.
Yes, that is question three, and so select up to four items.
Do you think we should, uh, select less numbers? I think we're gonna have a very saturated, um, response.
Uh-huh, okay.
If, I just want, if, further on down, you had, uh, at the end, I think you said, "Choose three," I think?
Yep.
Should we just lower it one, just to be able to?
Just keep it consistent, maybe with three.
Because actually, we only have one, two, three, four, five, six responses, if they choose four, it's gonna be very saturated.
That's true, good point. So, maybe down to three instead, yeah.
Should we split up water and sewer? Because we currently have public water, we don't have public sewer. I'm just asking, I'm not sure one way or another, I'm just wondering what you think.
Oh, that's two.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
It would be telling, right, if all of a sudden it was overwhelming for sewer and it was by itself, that would send it to session.
Yeah, we could break it out. Okay, I'll break that into two. The one, I think we started talking about it last week, I did add in the premium pay, uh, that I think I had missed on the last one. This is still under that number three, "In what areas should we invest our ARPA money? Provide premium pay to first responders slash workers during the COVID-19 emergency."
Oh, okay, so that wasn't updated?
I think, I think it wasn't in my one from last week, I've put, it's in here now. Um, and, but then the one we started talking about was this replace lost government revenue.
Yeah, I made a little note, what does that mean to the voter?
That was when I started questioning last week, it's, it's one of those government things, it's in their guidance, but.
Are we aware of any loss we have?
Well, given that we don't have a whole lot of, um, I mean, I think what's happening in other places, you know, they're, they're able to provide reimbursement to, um, certain things that, you know, we, we didn't, I don't know, we had estimated income.
Think of the meal stacks.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. We had something that, that we didn't, didn't receive that we were counting on, right? So, something like that, and I don't think, we don't have enough entities like that in town to make a real big difference. I, I was gonna suggest we might get rid of that question, frankly.
Yeah, I agree, I just don't think it's gonna mean that much to the voters and.
I think it's gonna, it's gonna confuse people without a lot of explanation, so. I, my recommendation would be to take, replace lost government revenue out, but then divide up water and sewer, so we still have the same number of possible responses.
And do you think choosing just three?
Three is fine, yeah, I think that's a good, good point.
And then for me, on, on, I guess it's the fifth question. The impact of COVID on your household?
Right.
You're not asking, you're not stating what kind of impact, economic, because it gets to it when you get to the next question that you're looking for economic impact, but you're not saying.
Yep.
So, I mean, people could interpret it differently if you don't specify.
True, okay, so.
Level of economic impact.
Adding in the word economic impact. Okay, yep, and right above that, the one in between, if funds should be allowable for any of the following items, where else should we invest our money? Would you want to keep that at three as well and?
Yeah, that's, I, that's what I think. And also, I think HVAC should be spelled out, I don't think everybody, everybody automatically knows what that is.
That's true. And this one, we did put in another to allow people to write in their comment if they wanted to. And then, so then the question after the one of the level of economic impact on your household, so this was a new question in here, depending on your answer to the above question, please briefly describe at least one negative and/or one positive impact of COVID-19 at your household level. For example, I had to work from home, but my internet access is not stable.
Where, where are you reading?
It's a new question, so you don't have the right one in your?
Oh, that was here.
In the package, you need to?
I think, I think there, just the first, the first word, Chris.
Yep.
Instead of depending, based. Based on your answer to the previous question.
Based on.
Yeah.
Yep.
Since regardless if it's negative or?
It's the top of page three.
Thanks.
Yep, sorry about that.
This is what was in the packet. Over here, right, nope. Help if there are none.
No, you've got version two.
Okay, okay, what version am I supposed to have, three?
Yeah, this is the question.
Okay, sorry, if you guys could share?
Okay.
Okay, so based on your answer to the above.
Oh, okay, so it's just open ended?
Briefly, this is a new question, I put in version three that wasn't in version two.
Okay.
Please briefly describe at least one negative and/or one positive impact of COVID at your household level. And I gave an example, I don't know, and that's just open, open-ended.
Yeah.
Just to see what people say, I don't know.
Maybe limit it to 250 characters.
You can limit something like that.
Is that okay in a SurveyMonkey to have an open-ended question like that?
Yep, and you can limit the characters. Yep, and then, the next question, if it's had a negative impact on your household, what assistance do you need? Choose up to three, that, that did not change, that was what it was.
So, so on that one, there should be a box that says not applicable. So you know whether or not they, they skipped it.
Not applicable.
Yeah.
Okay, yep, thank you. The next one, if you are an employer in Southampton, which I added based on last meeting, I just added the word in Southampton. And then I did add there, there's the threes, fully staffed, understaffed, and then other or not applicable to my situation, so, if that makes sense. And then we talked about adding more information about the kids, so do you have school-aged children in your household? Yes, no, is the first question. And then if yes, and help me with these, in the, this is new, these last two or three are, well, this one's new. If yes, in the 2021 school year, how many children in your household are students in? Pre-K is sixth grade, seventh, grade seven or eight, and grade nine to 12. So what we want them to do is fill in the number of kids. I gotta, I gotta see how that designs in SurveyMonkey, but it, it may be a bigger box where they write in the number.
Yeah.
But I think with that was what we were trying to get at, right? And I was including pre-K, not just kindergarten, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And then for parents and guardians of school, school-aged students, or, sorry, students at, I mean, Norris, recognizing the unique educational challenges COVID presented and the learning gap that followed, what assistance do you think would best benefit your student if funds were available, select only two? And these were the full-time math interventionist, full-time reading interventionist, dedicated summer school sessions, a behavioral technician to assist students with social, emotional, behavioral needs, all of the above, or maybe other as well, could add another, let people write in something else.
I just don't like the word technician, if we're talking about behavioral, social, and emotional needs, it should be a behavioral staff or person.
Staff, person?
Specialist.
Specialist, maybe?
Specialist, yeah.
Okay, yep, no problem. So that was that, and that was focusing on Norris kids in particular, and then we talked about, don't we need something similar for Hampshire Regional? So that's why that same question got repeated for Hampshire Regional, but I didn't have any other ideas about what the choices were.
Same responses, or you're going to come up with other ones?
Well, I think based on tonight's meeting, if we go back to the, if we go back to Lauren's report, and the superintendent's report, I think we can pick out two or three possible choices here.
Yeah.
Just going back to the, um, the previous one.
Yep.
Do you want to say, select only two, and then all of the above? It seems contrary for our question.
It kind of does, doesn't it? Yeah, maybe all of the above doesn't belong there, but just put other instead.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's true.
Yeah, because under Hampshire Regional's principals' report, number one and number two, she's going to be anticipating, looking for funding for an adjustment counselor.
Okay.
And a tier-two interventionist teacher.
And if we're assuming that people know what these are?
Well, they won't, so we need to tell, what, what's a tier?
Unless, unless you know that your child would benefit from it, then you know what they are.
Yeah.
And they could do the classic other, but we could also ask for the layman's terms.
Yeah, we can, we can get that translated into simpler language maybe. So basically that's it, it would be 12 questions. Any further thoughts? I'd like to try and, I've got it in SurveyMonkey now, but it, it can still be tweaked.
I think you need to give some direction here.
Yep, well.
People that don't have children in school should not be answering these questions. I don't know if you need to do that or not, because some people just keep going.
And when, you can usually block it, if you don't, if you don't answer that you have children, you don't get asked to.
Okay, then it won't pop up?
Right.
Okay, that'll take care of it.
So, do you have school-aged children in your household? And then it could be, stop.
If the answer is no.
If the answer is no.
Yeah.
And then it allows you, yeah, good point. Yeah, thank you, that's a good point. So for some people, it could be that much, and then there'd be two extra, three extra questions. Otherwise, so, this is getting pretty close, but I'm certainly willing to take another round of thoughts from maybe just people sending me emails so I can tweak it, if that's okay?
Are we able to get, can you update the draft and send it out?
Sure, I can do that, and I would want to, I would want to do a test, I would want to do a test before it went live anyway, so. This is my first play at SurveyMonkey, but it, it's.
Well, did you do the survey for, and master plan?
PVPC managed it, so I've answered many of them.
That was very well done.
I've, yeah, I've managed many of them, but no, they, they designed it with master plan committee's help, but to actually put in the questions and choose how you want the answers to be, you know, whether it's multiple choice or only one answer, or some other weirdness.
I do have a, a question or recommendation is, you know, the ARPA funds are in the bank. We're hearing all these other articles about all these other towns that are deciding this, that, and everything else.
Yep.
Two years is very short in the life of municipalities, and I just feel like we should come up with a timetable for when the survey should go out, when the responses are due by.
Yep.
And really start earmarking funds, we already heard the water department say, boy, they'd be happy with even 10% of what they're, you know, like, I really feel like we should really focus on how this money can best help the town, once we get feedback from residents.
Yep, I agree. I mean, I think, you know, with, with a little bit of tweaking and testing, certainly by our 21st meeting, this should be ready to go out.
Okay, good, I was kind of hoping it would go out by the first of the year.
Yeah, so I'm, I would, I would like to try, I mean, I don't know that anybody's going to look at anything over the holidays, but
Yeah.
at least it would be out there. And probably, I don't know, my thought would be to have it out for the month of January, I mean, I don't know, what's anybody think, or a little bit longer?
I think getting it out by January seems reasonable, like you said.
Leave it open for, you know, five to, five to six weeks, or four to five weeks, or, for people to answer, to respond.
Well, how long did you leave the master plan survey open for?
That was a good, solid month.
Yeah.
Yeah, easily a month, yeah, between four to six weeks, I think, on that one.
Yeah. I think, I think a month.
Yeah.
A month is good.
So, so maybe?
Maybe we can come up with a timetable.
Yeah, okay, well, we can.
That'd be great.
Think about that for the next meeting, to propose a timetable. And my only other question was, like we did?
One other question, can we also survey, like, employee, I mean, the employees here too? I'm sorry, I mean, this will go out to the employees of the town, right?
Yeah.
Also?
It'll be public for everybody, yeah, no, we just have to figure out how to, I've got to figure out how to, how it gets distributed. That's what, you know, we've got to send it out and put it out in a, in a public way, so that's, I got to double-check on the options on that, but yeah. No, it needs to be wide, I mean, citizens of the town, workers in town hall, everybody. But my question was going to be, like we did for the master plan survey, we also had hard copies. Because we knew that there were people that didn't have access to computers and, and wouldn't do this online. This certainly could be printed out and, and put in hard copy, I really don't know that I want to create another Dropbox for somebody to come and put it in our, our little box out in the middle of the parking lot somewhere, but just a thought about that, whether this should be also done.
I, I think so, I mean, I'm happy to help compile results if it becomes a problem, but we saw when people tried to sign up for vaccines online, elderly people.
Right, couldn't do it.
They couldn't do it.
And I think what happens though is that, once you do have, say, handwritten results, then somebody's got to, got to enter this in.
Enter them into the system.
So that, the survey counts at all, right?
Yeah, that's what I said.
So that's where a lot of the, you know, the ending work would be, but, okay, well, we'll finalize some of those thoughts next time around, but I got the idea about a timetable and method by which it's distributed, okay? Great, I, I feel good about doing this, I mean, I think this needs to happen, I, I really would at least hope that we'd have some level of interest and input here to guide us along.
I agree.
All right, now. So, 2023 budget process and select board priorities. And I know Ian, you're sitting here waiting for us, I'm sure you're waiting for your signatures, do you want us to jump ahead or? You're okay? All right.
They're coming up next anyway.
You'll be after this, but, you know, if we can keep this, at least for an initial discussion. Ed and I had, had talked, we, we had shared the, I think, the budget, budget process bylaw at the last meeting, and so we know we've got to get this done. And Ed, you have, you can fill this in, and I don't know that you sent a draft around, but you've already worked on a draft of a letter to the departments, is that right?
Correct, and it's just waiting for, you know, to add any priorities that the select board want to emphasize for this year, and Bradley's already working on the new templates to be sent out to the departments.
Does it be an Excel sheet?
Yes.
Okay, and is it going to be, I know last year was because we were trying to do two different budgets, right? What you are currently, and then maybe an increase, or?
Yeah, ba- basically, the first tab is for level funded plus contractual increases, and the tab two that's in there is for a limited number of would-like-to-haves.
Okay. So, something, would people want to see a, a draft of that before it goes out? Or shall we allow Ed to just go ahead and put it all together, once we get our priorities? He's going to fill in the blanks in the letter with priorities, that sounds good?
Everybody agreed before, so I'm happy with that.
Okay, that's fine. So with that, how about some thoughts about select board priorities for this coming budget year? I've got two or three in my head, but I'll let everybody else start. Anybody would like to?
Well, number one, I think that a lot of department heads that are non-contractual went directly to the voters. We raised up, or suggested that we raise up the lowest-paid employees, which ended up being the ones below 10%. I think, you know, being able to do something again on the salary line, maybe for non-contractual department heads, possibly. I saw that, was it Waitley that hired that person?
Combination town planner?
Planner, grant.
Conservation agent, something grant.
Conservation agent, I mean, being able to do something like that would be fantastic. And it was one of, of course, the schools got hit really bad last time, I think we should probably hope to do better on this process than we did last time, and when it came to the schools. So those are the things that come immediately to mind, for me.
Okay, I would, certainly, on the first one, I would phrase that as kind of continue with the pay or salary equity process that we had started?
I don't know if I'd use that word exactly, I would say something more like, um.
Yeah, that's running out here. I mean, again, we'd be looking?
You want to identify the measurement we're going to use?
Yeah.
I think we need to, we need to do that.
I would just say continue to work towards salary improvements.
Okay. Okay, continue to work towards salary improvements, okay?
Or salary implies that it's somebody who's
Continue to work.
Supposed hourly, so maybe there's a more neutral word, I don't know.
Continue to work towards competitive compensation packages.
Okay, competitive compensation.
Yeah.
Packages, because it could be more than just wages.
Okay. All right, and Francine, your point of what would we use as the instrument?
Yeah.
And recommendation?
Well, if we, if we use, you know, the Jacob study, looking at the scale, where we look at, you know, current, mid, and, and max, identifying where we would like to see, you know, bring people up to at a, at a minimum. Would we like to see everybody at the, at the midpoint? At least that.
Yeah.
Excuse me, why would you want to see everybody at the midpoint? Those salary, salary scales are done for a reason. People start on grade one, when they begin a new position. After X amount of years, they may get to a midpoint, and after Y amount of years, they may get to a high point.
I, I hear you with the criteria, yes, but we need to have a yardstick, so, but we also need some basis to, to make those decisions, which are performance reviews, I'm thinking, that would be coming from the department heads. We wouldn't be making decisions, I think, willy-nilly, they would have to come from somebody who has the knowledge about a person's performance to get them there, but, I mean, we have to have a threshold. If we're talking about competitive compensation, you know, that's.
Last time we voted as a board to accept salaries on a scale that we use to base the percentage below minimum.
And we use the Jacob study as our, as our reference tool?
As a yardstick, that's all.
Okay, so you just want to clarify?
At the time, it had been presented by PQB.
Right, and we don't anticipate having anything else coming out of this other PVPC grant process that you guys have been working on?
No, I asked them specifically, I asked specifically for them to do a salary survey, and they said no.
Yeah, okay.
Really?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
I mean, it may eventually come after the fact, but not part of this.
So, using, using the Jacob study as a reference point, continue to work toward competitive compensation packages?
Yeah, or, or any other instrument, but I, I think.
Why don't we just say that we're going to work with PQB to, I mean?
Fine, too.
Yeah, okay.
I think the main thing is we're just going to try to improve wages.
Yep, okay.
Okay, that's fine, let's leave it at that, work with PVB.
Okay, all right. And Betty, I'll throw out one, it sounds like we have something that we need to deal with, with this estate that has been put forth toward the town, the Parsons Estate, that we need to think about moving forward with some kind of a plan for construction, or some acquisition, some, something for a senior center? Based on, based on the wheel, so whatever that is, the senior center, I don't know if it's construction necessarily.
Design, design plan is what they have to have in two years.
Yeah, that's a, yes, absolutely. I anticipate the COA board will come to this committee.
I would assume.
Possibly a building committee, an ad hoc building committee.
Yeah, okay, all right, but I think senior center design plan, given that there's a timeframe on that.
Yeah, April 2023.
Yeah, so that needs to be, I think, personally, I think it needs to be a priority, if it's going to happen. Okay, anybody else, other things?
Yeah, how about consolidation, improved efficiencies?
Yeah.
Open to alternative ways to do things, not just continue to keep doing things the same way year after year.
Right. And that comes back to zero-based budgeting, but we're not going to do that.
And I almost think, encourage department heads to think outside the box, and that we would be receptive to what those thoughts are during the budget process.
With justification, with written justification.
We'd be receptive, you know, open to it, and not just going to be closed-minded.
No, I think in terms of, you know, the, the guidance, you know, thinking outside the box is something that Ed can, can mention, and, but I think a lot of, some of the, some of the department heads did a great job with a lot of? But I think a lot of, some of the, some of the department heads did a great job with a lot of narrative, trying to explain their, their person, their rationale. And then others, you know, didn't spend a lot of time, and it was kind of hard to understand some of that. So I think the more that they can give us some, some written narrative that really helps to understand their thinking.
The cost efficiencies committee will probably help refine some of that.
Yeah, if we get moving on it, hopefully. Got something else in my mind, what was it? Anybody else? Joey, thoughts? Anything? My fan, priorities for select board?
We're going to say bottom line, you know, your total budget cannot increase by more than what percent? Are we going to establish that? So that they know that they're working within some parameters? Or are we leaving it to, because we eventually end up getting there and that's harder to, to, you know, you ask people to give it to you and then you take it away. Do you, do you want to set any guidelines like that?
Did we put in like that they could factor in a 2% COLA or anything last year? Was that in the guidance? No?
Yeah, the, the letter specifically says to leave your salaries at the current year's salary level. And that the select board and, I think it's.
Finance.
And finance would fill in that percentage at a later date.
Well, given that, I support COLAs.
But if we're asking people to think outside the box and maybe do things differently. If we just said a number, you, you know, they, they might realize savings in some way in order to spend it in others.
So you're, you're not just talking COLA, you're talking about their overall department budget?
I'm talking about overall.
So just to?
Departmental budget. If you want to spend it here, can you save it here? I mean, not to exceed a certain percentage, that's, that's all.
That's tough though, because I think a different, departments have different needs at different times. I mean, look at our tree thing. I mean, we're basically zero, zero heading into winter. And two special town meetings, we increased funding for that. We have to have more funding for, for the tree warden. And that's not going to be a 2% increase.
No. No, because we're not talking about his salary, we're talking about his, the expense.
Yeah. I think two other things that come to my mind, one would be website upgrade, town, town website upgrade? And some level of new financial software.
Yeah. It's a good start.
Yeah, good enough for now.
Did you want to say anything?
I think we're out of money already.
You want to add anything?
We were out of money before we started.
I know. I know, I know.
I just, I do want to keep in mind, that, I think the highway department, for example, I don't know if there were any other ones, but that one's stuck in mind. Their timeline of like, this is what we'll need by this year. And I thought that was really well laid out. And I want to see that from other departments, so that we can keep that in mind going forward every year when we do, are doing a budget.
So capital, capital purchase, like fleet?
Yeah, yeah, and, yeah. And also making sure our library is funded and just, and the tree warden, like, things that may go by the wayside, but that end up really being important.
Okay. So, trying to follow department equipment replacement schedules? Does that make some sense?
Yeah.
Equipment replacement?
Well, except, except I'm going to make this point. You're talking about an operating budget letter and now you're talking about capital items. Two different things.
Yeah, true. No, but I'm talking about select board priorities though, so maybe that.
But you're talking about putting those priorities into an operating budget request letter.
Yeah, okay. No.
So what's the difference? I, this is my first budget, like, process.
Two different processes, operating budget, capital requests, totally separate.
But they're going parallel in the process?
They're going parallel.
We're working both.
Right.
Okay.
But right now, we're talking about, we're talking about the priority, the select board priorities to include in the operating budget letter.
In just the operating. Okay, so we're just talking about operating, not about capital. Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Yeah. And so that, back on Rini's second one was this sort of this idea of a, at least a part-time planner slash conservation agent plus whatever they were, that was that all-around person that Waitley or somebody had suggested, which we saw in the paper.
Right, so just building, I mean, again, if we're doing, it is Christmas, so I guess we should do a wish list. But, you know, one of the things I think needs to happen is, you know, for the town to eliminate the PPPB board and hire a 15-hour HR specialist, a little higher than a generalist, but not, yes, less than a manager, and have them be a direct report to the town administrator to start increasing efficiencies. That costs money if we come up with it. I think that would help in a lot of areas. But two, you know, I hear, well, again, I think everybody here can make an argument that everything we've already said and that we're going to say have to be priorities, because everything, everything's a priority. And so I guess in its basic, in my mind, and the basic concept is, how do we continue to either meet the current standard of the quality of life in Southampton to the residents? And/or improve it? And that could be very broad, right? You know, it touches on anything we've already talked about, but, you know, I'll, I'll pick on, on the chief since he's here. It's, he's, he's not crying wolf at the podium. He keeps saying that eventually, you know, he's not going to be able to staff the police department. You know, we've got a fire chief that's already come in that has already said can't staff the ambulances.
So is that something though that would go in the, in the sort of the budget letter in terms of our priorities? Or is that something that would come out of our new committee?
I think it's almost like a philosophy. Our philo-, our philosophy, our goal, or our intent is to maintain the level of service, whether, whether it's good, bad, or indifferent, but we want it, we want to enhance it. And every year, we want to figure out a way to improve the quality of life to the residents in return for their tax dollars. And that means maintaining, at least for right now, the level of service across the board, whatever that might be.
Okay, I can state that.
I don't know. I don't know how do we, so I'm guessing, this is like a cover letter?
Yeah.
Yes.
Letter of, this is what the five, no pun intended, the five great minds here kind of are charging folks with, right?
Because I've already started the letter off with the gloom and doom prediction, so, yes, now, now you can get into the happy gas. We want to add this.
And you're going to put us in the fourth paragraph so they stop reading by the time they get the R's.
Okay, one more for an even eight?
I just wanted to say I support what John just said about the personnel committee or the HR specialist.
Well, that should be the outcome of this study that we're in, is there should be a regionalized service that we should be able to purchase à la carte. So hopefully that'll meet that.
I think removing it and having it be regional would be an excellent thing for HR, just because of the level of personal.
Yes.
Detail.
Could be a great improvement.
So is that, do you want that as a priority for us?
I would say it's a priority.
Okay. Okay, well, I get eight of them so far. Okay, good enough for now, Ed?
I, I think.
That's plenty, yeah. I was figuring about four.
Yeah, I know.
We can keep going.
You let these minds go, I tell you. Got to corral them somewhere here. All right, good. Plenty, plenty enough. All right, any other necessary business that can't wait until our next regular meeting on the 21st? Not aware of any in particular. Has anybody got anything offhand? All right, if not, let us go to some signatures and PCFs. We have first. Resignation for the part-time police officer Brianna Eichstet, who has resigned apparently, unfortunately, given her schedule and other commitments. And then we have, let's, let's take that one maybe separately, that's one.
I make a motion to approve, accept the resignation of Bree Eichsted.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right. Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
I believe we did this one last time, Ed. Because you looked to see what, you left the room to see what, if the dates would interfere. I thought we already assigned her as the additional 12 weeks because we did this.
Yeah, but we, I don't think we, I don't think we approved it for a signature.
Okay, it wouldn't hurt to do it.
All right, then let's do these, these two together.
I'll make a motion to approve both assessor office staff, Janine Domina, admin assessor, additional 12 hours per week temporary, so 12 weeks. And then David Zagorski, temporary principal assessor, additional 12 weeks temporary.
Okay. Have a second, please?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion? If not, could I, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, both approved. Next one. This is Melissa Roberts Cote, is that how you pronounce her?
Cody.
Cody? Okay, a leave of absence from the part-time dispatcher at the police department.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So be it. And then firefighter as needed, a fire, fire department, part-time, non-benefited, Taylor Pascal.
Motion to approve.
I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I think all the paperwork has been.
Yeah, I've got all the originals here for you to start.
I was going to say, yeah, no, these, these are the ones, I just want to clarify, these all went through PQB last night, right? Because we don't have.
Okay, good.
So those do have PQB signature on, okay, thank you.
I have a question on the next one. If there's already an established position as an admin assistant and the position is vacant, why do we have to have another PRF for it?
Anytime you're filling a new position or an existing position, you have to file the PRF before the PCF.
The PRF triggers the posting.
Right.
To make it open to all, and so.
And does an emergency require a PRF?
There is no emergency for a PRF, no.
Okay.
Only a PCF.
So you can do an emergency PCF?
PCF?
For a resignation?
What's that?
Can you do an emergency PCF for a resignation?
Yes.
Why would you do an emergency PCF for a resignation?
To appoint somebody.
To appoint somebody to cover for two weeks. If someone resigns, the position is vacant, can you do an emergency to get somebody in there sooner for two weeks and then work on the interim?
Yeah, but not on the person who resigned, yeah.
Correct, but so resigns, you got your back.
I'm talking about if there is a resignation, in order to fill it on an emergency basis, so that there's no, you know, indefinite lapse of time without assistance, can you do an emergency, do you, you need a PCF for an emergency? Physician?
If, if the PRF has been done and approved and it's been posted for two weeks.
And somebody applies, then you can do the emergency two-week appointment to allow time to get to the PPPB board to get it voted on.
So it should.
So you would go open for two weeks.
That should have been the first thing immediately for a resignation, is fill out a PRF.
Correct, but I believe in this particular case, at least the discussion last night was, there was a bigger discussion had by the oversight authority that they may want to go in a different direction, which caused a delay.
Okay. Can I just suggest something though? In the, in the workroom, in the break room, there is a flow chart that's taped to the countertop that does not show that this is, this is the, the way the forms are, the use of a PCF versus a PRF.
Yeah.
So I looked at it very specifically and it does, what says a resignation, you do a PC, well, a PCF for the resignation.
Yep.
But then there's that assumption that the PCF is also for, could be used for an emergency replacement, but that's not true.
That's what my understanding was too, Francine.
Okay.
The whole point of it is to get someone in there ASAP.
But if it's into an existing position, it's not a new position.
Right, it's not new, but.
If somebody resigns and you want to fill it.
Right, that's the, that's the issue, Chris.
Which requires a PRF to be approved by the PPPB, the finance committee and the select board.
It's to prevent the appointing authority from handpicking the person.
Okay.
Okay, I got, I got you.
So we have two here. Take them together. Rini, you want to read those two for COA?
Um, sure, temporary admin assistants, PRF, part-time, non-benefited. And that is posting because of resignation. And then the PCF is for Mary Hatzapetro, Petro, temporary admin assistant, COA, part-time, non-benefited. I don't believe that was approved by PQB yet. So I don't think we can do anything with that tonight.
No.
Didn't come up?
But I would like to.
We took both items up last night.
So?
And, and we approved the PRF, we modified the summary posting that was submitted to us. We struck the third sentence in the first paragraph and we added a sentence to the last paragraph or to, made a new paragraph. Basically, what we struck was the isolation of the wages $15. We got rid of that. We, we had issues before, right, because there's a range. And then we added a sentence down at the end because of the conversation that this, this posting had to be posted for 10 business days before anything could be done.
Okay.
And, and the department had indicated that that was fine as long as we agreed to meet by the second week of January. That it wasn't a conflict, it wasn't an issue for her.
Okay, so the temporary admin assistant PRF has been posted now.
We approved it last night, I think.
Okay, I think I saw it on the.
Approved to finish it, right?
Yeah, I think I saw it on the bulletin board. Okay, so what you're saying is the one for the temporary admin assistant, part-time Mary Hatzapetro, we can't act on because that has not been dealt with?
Because it hasn't been publicly posted yet. That would be handpicking the replacement.
Right. Okay, so, but I did put a motion to, for the PRF for the actual posting of the position.
Okay. Okay, so let's take up the PRF. Could I have a second on that one?
Second.
All right, all those in favor of the PRF for the temporary admin assistant, COA? Part-time, non-benefited?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, so we are not dealing with the next one, correct?
Correct.
Right, the PPPB sent it back to the department head with instructions.
Okay. All right, and then we have two last ones. PRF for two certified police officers, police department, part-time, non-benefited. And a public safety, another PRF for a public safety communications dispatcher, police department, part-time, non-benefited.
And the PPP board approved both of those last night.
Okay.
I have a question about them, but should I, I'll make a motion first to approve the two PRFs. Two certified police officers, part-time, non-benefited. And for the public safety communication dispatcher, part-time, non-benefited.
I'll second it.
The question I had is, I think you mentioned during one of our meetings, possibly something about, I think on dispatcher, you said, how do you distinguish part-time and per diem, or is it basically the same?
It is, it's the same essentially.
Okay, all right. Okay.
They'll get scheduled or they'll be called in, so they call upstairs.
Okay.
So essentially it is the same.
Okay, so this is pretty much the same?
Yes.
They're not going to be on a regular schedule?
They're not on a regular.
They're going to be just per diem, okay, or, okay, thanks. That's really the only question I have.
Yeah, okay, great. All right, so we have a motion on the table and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Okay. Like the last, well, not the last, but almost the last. Okay, we have a.
Good night.
Have a good night, Ian, thank you.
All right, we have a whole bunch of licenses and permits, common victor or licenses and permits?
Chair, I have to excuse myself for the common victor license and permits.
Okay.
From the room.
For, for one of them, right?
For one of them. So I don't know if you're doing them, it's one conversation, but yeah, just let me know.
Yeah, we can do that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we'll probably go down each, I don't know. You want to vote on the others though, right?
Oh, okay. I'll vote for it if you write your.
What are?
You can group them all, accept that one together.
Yeah, why don't we?
And vote on that one separately.
All right, so we could.
Make it easier.
Okay.
I'll make a motion then to approve all of the common victor licenses, including Beshista Orchards, Big Y World Class Market, Cumberland Farms, Dunkin' Donuts, or Duncan, Good Each To Go, Sheldon Ice Cream, Subway, Walgreens, and Shop and Save, provided all of the paperwork is complete.
And fees have been paid, yep. Could I have a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on those? Paperwork's fine, Ed, on those, basically?
Yes, it is.
From what looks like it? Lots of paperwork for these guys, okay.
Uh, yes. She was pulling her hair out the last few days.
The one question that I have. Is there anybody missing from this list? Did anybody not renew?
On, on the common vic, no?
No, but actually, actually, I think this is a first that they all, both on the common vic and usually on the alcohol, they get, get them in. But this is the first time, for the first meeting in December, that they all got their paperwork and their checks back for the common vic dealers.
What about the new place, Anytime Nutrition?
The what? The what?
What, the New Place?
Anytime Nutrition?
Anytime Nutrition.
Hmm, that's the one right at the corner of Pomerano Road and Route 10?
170 College Avenue.
They sell like smoothies, right?
Yeah.
The new.
I think that a smoothie would fall under a food permit from the health, Board of Health.
Okay, that might be.
I don't know.
Something different than this, yeah?
Yeah.
I think it's worth asking.
Nutrition, yeah. Okay, but anyway, so we have this group.
I will find out.
Yeah, was there another question, John?
No, that was it.
That was it, okay, so would that, get a motion and a second, could we have a vote, please? All those in favor of the establishments listed, with the exception of the one not mentioned?
Aye.
Aye.
All those in favor, aye, okay, thank you.
And I'll make a motion to approve the last one, which is McKell's Coffee Company.
All right.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm supposed to leave the room technically?
Yes, you are.
So we have a four and then an abstain, right?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, you may come back in.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, next we have a set of alcohol and other permits, this is alcohol and sometimes mixed in with common vic and entertainment.
So, questions, any reason not to take these all as a package?
I don't think so, there were only a couple that I saw that had not put in their, the number of employees on their orgments cop.
That would be Westlake and Pure Foods, and I will make sure that Judy contacts them and gets that information and fills it in before the licenses actually get mailed out.
Right.
So, I'm relying on you, Ed, as town administrator, if there's nothing in here that you would recommend us to vote against the one particular one?
Absolutely, so we could take it all. All the paperwork's in, in line.
Yep.
No, no issues with any of the businesses.
Right, so then I'll make a motion that we approve Camp John Country Liquor Stores, Glendale Ridge Vineyard, Pisonos Restaurant and Pub, not, Pure Food, Smitty's Package Store, Southampton Beer and Wine, Southampton Country Club, Tin Can Alley Lounge, and Westlake Gourmet.
Okay, could I have a second, please?
And I'm just gonna do this, you go ahead and second it, and then I'll.
I'll second it. Okay, yeah, go ahead, Ed?
Okay, Camp John, alcohol, common victular, entertainment, and coin op. County Liquor Store, alcohol. Glendale Ridge Vineyard, alcohol, common victular, entertainment. Pisonos Restaurant and Pub, alcohol, common victular, entertainment, coin op, non-coin op. Pure Food, alcohol, common victular. Smitty's Package Store, alcohol. Southampton Beer and Wine, alcohol. Southampton Country Club, alcohol, common victular, entertainment. Tin Can Alley, alcohol, common victular, entertainment, coin op. Pool Tables, Bowling Alley. And Westlake Gourmet, alcohol and common victular.
Okay.
Why is the pool tables listed separately?
It's actually a separate.
Doesn't Pisonos have a pool table, or did they get rid of them?
License.
I thought they, at one point they had pool tables.
They do.
Pisonos do?
And they're, they're listed on their application.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that should be added there, pool table.
Yes, for Pisonos. Well, does that come under coin op and non-coin op? Are we just talking about it, or? I don't know.
I don't think so.
So we're saying that Pisonos also needs pool table reference?
Yeah, should.
Okay, all right, so with that modification, all right, I think we are ready to take a vote. All those in favor of the list of establishments for their alcohol and other licenses?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I hearing no abstentions and no negative votes, everything passes, thank you. Okay, we have.
Thank you.
Yep, we have, so everybody, we've got a bunch of paperwork to sign tonight.
Oh, God, yeah.
Before you all leave, so don't get too excited. You know, warrants, we have none tonight, other documents, none, we have one set of minutes, I think, to approve.
Motion to approve Tuesday, October 12, 2021, Board of Select, and regular scheduled meeting.
I have one correction.
Okay, let's have a second first.
Second.
Okay, yeah, second, go ahead.
One correction is spelling of Lindsay's first name on page three. When we talk about Lindsay Sabadosa, it's L-I-N-D-S-A-Y.
About where in the page?
It's towards the bottom, right above the signatures.
Oh, yeah, the last bullet before signatures?
Yes, and the, and the last, next to the last line in that section.
Lindsay, L-I-N-D.
What page?
Page three or four.
Page three.
So page three, last bullet, under, right before the signatures?
Well, there's no signature, oh, man.
Right before the signature category, on the minutes. Page, page three of the minutes.
Oh, okay, see what you're saying, yeah.
Lindsay's first name, just spelled wrong, okay, anything else? Thank you for catching that, anybody else? And I guess, just on the minutes to approve, I, I don't remember this, did we ever approve on the last page? It says here a motion was made to approve minutes of August 31. And I said I found some misleading language, so the board tabled the minutes, so you could review the, did we ever redo those? If not, that may be, I mean, this may be just fine, but we may, we need to just double check to see if we actually ever approved the August 31 minutes, I don't.
I believe we did, but.
Yeah.
The line above it says it was approved.
Okay. Where, up here? No, that was a motion.
A motion was, okay.
But then read the second part.
Yeah, I, I got you.
It's probably fine, but it just struck me as a little odd there, but anyway, other than the correction with Lindsay.
I did, now I remember, I did bring that one back.
Okay, fine, okay, so, all those in favor of approving minutes, aye, with one correction.
I'm going to abstain, abstain just because I was absent and there's a quorum to approve them.
Okay, fine, so four approvals and Rini's abstaining, okay, perfect. All right, so, pending items, do we have any? We've talked about naming rights already, that came up under the other one, so that really isn't there. Old Town Hall, I think the only thing we had reached out to Hillwood Associates to give us some cost estimates about a statement of work for some basic work, and they haven't really, have they come back with anything specific yet or not yet? In terms of a cost estimate, or?
No, they haven't.
Not yet, for like a, doing a statement of work, okay. Nothing else yet on Charter Building on Former Road, Clearwater Woodland Boundary, or anything more on the Green Community Grant that we have to pay attention to?
No, not yet.
We've got an email about the sidewalk thing, are we all fine with the date on that sidewalk in front of the cemetery?
That was part of my TA report, we're waiting for.
Drainage and all that, but was it, was still fine as far as the funding?
Mass DOT to approve it, and I think if we have to go out for an extension, I think StanTech would probably help us.
With that.
Write the justification for it, so I think we're probably okay on that, we don't, we haven't gone there yet because nobody said that we should stop and not count on this at all, but.
Exactly.
Everything's kind of ready to roll if, if the permit would come through.
Hillwood is ready to go, it's just dealing with Mass DOT again.
Waiting with a permit, okay, so our next regular select board meeting will be December 21st, and we have a special town meeting on December 14th at 7:00 PM at Nora School. And do we want to set January meeting dates while we're here?
Yeah, I was just looking at, it looks like it would be the 8/4th and the 18th, I think. If we're sticking with our current calendar.
Right, to stay on schedule, the last meeting is the 21st of, do you have December, so January 4 and January 18?
Yes.
Okay, there we go.
Do you have any additional executive session in the next couple of weeks?
Would there be another one for executive session with dispatch or anything yet?
Would it be on the 21st?
Well, our normal week would be the 14th for that, so what I would like to ask the select board is if we can sneak one executive session in at the end of the meeting on the 21st.
Yeah, okay, or sometime, yeah, okay.
I'm going to have to wait and see what the situation in town is about that meeting, though. I'll let you know.
Okay. All right, so with that, yes, John?
So are we going to also post for a meeting on the 14th?
Yes, we are, okay.
For that.
For 6:00 PM, I got to make sure that we can get the library, though.
Yeah.
That would be the only.
The library at the school?
Yeah.
Okay, so the meeting on the 14th, we are going to, topic is?
Well, we would, we would convene at 5:59.
Yeah.
And then take a recess, and assuming the article passes.
Come back.
Then we would convene just to.
Resume our meeting.
Okay.
All right, approve the, I don't know.
Yeah.
Do something, take some action.
Do something, yeah, okay, sounds good, all right, with that in mind, yeah?
Would my assumption be correct that what will be read in will be an amended motion for that article, and then instead of $35,000, the amount would be $30,000?
Right, with the new, the new offer that we have, the new possible bid.
Kincher's offer.
I know, I know we can't say up to.
No, you cannot. But I just want to state now that what should be read in for that article, if that is.
Right.
What our intention is, is different from what is in that.
Right.
STM warrant, so, I will write that, that up for whoever's reading the motion.
I would say we would put in the.
Yeah, well, we're having a sidebar to leave it at the 35, but I get my, my heads. You know the reason why I wouldn't want to do it, is if at some time between now and then, you came back and said those were, you know, one of those groups had the worst references in the entire world.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
So, if everything is satisfied, I'm comfortable with it.
I got you, okay, yeah.
I mean, assuming the references check out, I'd favor putting in the 30 rather than the 35.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it up now, so.
Yes, that's the offer we were given, let's, let's stick with it.
I'll make a motion to a attorney.
I mean.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, was that a?
Adjourned.
Adjourned, okay, yes, thank you very much, I'm glad everybody took that, we are adjourned at 10:00 PM, all right, guys.
Keep it nice and even.
Thank you very much, people.
First, here's all the PPPs, so.
Oh, perfect, yeah, so we got some signatures to do here, Lordy. I got these ones, but you guys start on something else, yeah.
Oh, I got all kinds of stuff around here.
And I should put.